Here.
Bukiewicz.
Here.
Verhaelen.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Gale.
Here, and just a point of order as Alderman from the 5th District, I will be maintaining my vote tonight on behalf of the citizens of the 5th District on every item on the agenda. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is the approval of minutes from the meeting of February 20th, 2017.
Bukiewicz will make a motion to approve the minutes of 2/20/17 as listed.
Graham, seconds.
Great, roll call.
Alderman Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Abstain.
Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Abstain.
And just a reminder for the audience, if you haven't done it already, if there's an item on the agenda you wish to speak at, there's forms in the back of your room to fill out and bring forward to the clerk and show, make sure that they are either read into the record or you'll be able to appear as the item comes up on the agenda. Item number four is the conditional use report of public hearing, request submitted by Chris McGuire, QuickTrip Inc., for a conditional use permit allowing outdoor display and storage of retail merchandise on the property at 2040 West Ryan Road. Kathryn?
Public hearing number one is a notice of public hearing before the Oak Creek Common Council. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider a request by Chris McGuire, QuickTrip Inc., for a conditional use permit allowing outdoor display, storage of retail merchandise on the property at 2040 West Ryan Road. The applicant is Chris McGuire, QuickTrip Inc. Property owner is QuickTrip Inc. Date of notice is February 2nd, 2017.
Doug, your hand.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the Director of Community Development for the City of Oak Creek, and this is a public hearing, a request for a conditional use permit for the property at 2040 West Ryan Road for the outdoor display of retail merchandise, specifically ice and propane. QuickTrip is requesting a conditional use for outdoor storage and display of ice and propane at the property. Typically, outdoor display of merchandise is considered a conditional use in the B4 Highway Business District, which this is. To be consistent with some of the other approvals that the city has done in the past, in the recent past for gas stations, the Plan Commission has recommended that the outdoor display be limited to ice and propane only, whereas other places traditionally have had some other things, no firewood, no mulch, no water softener, anything like that, solely limited to propane and ice, and again, in those kind of, those lock dispensers. So, again, the Plan Commission has reviewed the proposed request of conditional use. They have recommended to the council that the conditional use be granted, and subject to the conditions and restrictions which are part of your packet. This is a public hearing. I'd ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed conditional use permit, to fill out an appearance form, hand that up to the city clerk. When your name is called, please approach the microphone, give your name, address, and proceed to address your comments and/or questions to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Great, thank you, Doug. We'll make three calls for public commentary on this item. First call. Second call. Third call. With that said, I'll turn over to council if there's any commentary, or Planning Commission members want to make any comments on the hearing that was before them. Danny?
Just to let you in on the discussion we had at Planning Commission, Doug pretty much teed it up pretty well. This does run consistent with what we do in other parts of the city for other gas stations or service stations. There was very little discussion regarding the merchandise they are going to show. Probably the biggest question was where the ice machine was going to be located, and they are redoing the building. It's actually located in a very convenient spot on the south side of the building, and actually will be shielded by some landscapes. That said, for update on the council.
Great, thank you, Dan. Questions, comments from the council?
One question. Mark. In regards to signage, are they going to use the existing signage poles there, or are they going to put new, different ones up in different locations?
Hannah Christie, no? Is the applicant in the audience? Doug, would you have a?
I don't recall. I believe that the, we could, oh.
Yeah, okay. Please.
I'm guessing it's going to be new.
Okay. Name an address for the record, please.
Anita Crispin, 2040 West Ryan Road. I missed a question.
One more time.
2040 West Ryan Road, Anita Crispin. What was the question again?
If, if your company is going to use the existing sign poles there, or if you're going to put in different sign poles and, and to accommodate your different signage, because I know you have different styles of signage than the company that was there previously.
I'm not 100% sure on that. I'm going to guess that they would probably...
Alderman Verhaelen, I can find out for you what the Plan Commission actually ultimately did to that.
It's not, it's not, it's not something that's earth shattering, but, you know, if the poles move someplace where it interrupts sightage for people that are turning or making a corner or whatever, that makes a difference.
Anything else? Motion?
Guzekowski, make a motion to approve ordinance number 2843, approving the conditional use permit for the property at 2040 West Ryan Road, allowing the outdoor display of ice and propane retail merchandise.
Toman, seconds.
Toman, seconds. Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Great, thank you. New business. Item number six is the appointment by the Common Council to fill a vacancy in the office of mayor as a result of the resignation of the Honorable Stephen Scafidi to complete his term of office, which expires on April 17th, 2018. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa to kind of key up the discussion, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. The matter of filling the mayoral vacancy is, is a decision of the Common Council. So, the bottom line is that the council must appoint someone to fill the vacancy, and in addition to this appointment, the council also has the option of ordering a special election that would be held in November. Until someone is appointed, the Common Council president serves as the acting mayor. So, the question for the council to consider is, what do you want to do in terms of the method of appointment to fill this vacancy, and whether to order a special election in November? So, in terms of some of the background, the Wisconsin statutes do address the filling of this vacancy. Section 17.23, Sub 1, Sub A, states that the vacancy in the office of mayor is filled by appointment by the Common Council for the residue of the unexpired term unless a special election is ordered by the Common Council, in which case, the person appointed shall serve until his or her successor is elected and qualified. So, in addition to that, the timing of this vacancy is an issue under the statutes. It is the same subsection, 17.23, Sub 1, Sub A, which states that if the vacancy happens after December 1st and before the first Tuesday in April, then the successor shall be elected on the first Tuesday in April of the next ensuing year. In addition to that, if the vacancy occurs before June 1st, in the year preceding the expiration of the term of office, the Common Council may order a special election to be held on the Tuesday after the first Monday in November, following the date of that order. A person so elected shall serve for the residue of the unexpired term. So here's what that means. The mayoral term of Mayor Scafidi, having resigned, expires in April of 2018. Because the vacancy occurred after December 1st, the Common Council must appoint to fill the mayoral vacancy. That's one point. Because the vacancy occurred before June 1st, the Common Council may order the special That's the extent of the statutes in terms of guidance and authority. In terms of the statutes and our code of ordinances for the City of Oak Creek, they do not set forth the method of appointment to fill the vacancy. So the council needs to determine its own procedure in two fashions. One, in terms of nominating the candidates, and two, in selecting someone to fill this In terms of past practices in the City of Oak Creek for filling a vacancy on the Common Council, those methods have included the following three. Either appointing a current member of the Common Council, and then if a vacancy is created in an aldermanic seat, the council would need to appoint someone to serve the balance of that term. Second, the council can solicit applications or resumes from individuals who are interested. In the past, for an aldermanic vacancy, the council has conducted interviews and then made an appointment. Third, the council could appoint a member of the public without going through the application or interview process and having the benefit of that. So the question to the council is, how do you want to proceed? And I would suggest that, Mr. Chair, you take the next step in terms of the discussion.
Thank you, Melissa, for setting the table there. I just want to kick off the discussion by offering a public thanks to our now former mayor, Steve Scafidi. I believe he had, has done yeoman's work as our leader for the past five years. Incredible time of growth and, and new development here in the city. Obviously, some other aspects of that particular tenure were marred by, obviously, the sick temple shooting, but I believe he has been an incredible champion of the city and an incredible advocate for the citizens of this community. So, we'll take care of a formal thanks to Mayor Steve here in a couple of weeks, but I just want to set the table with that and express our appreciation for all the, all the work he's done on behalf of this community. So, that said, onward to the new mayor appointment. From my standpoint, I am, just I'll line it up, and you guys can comment as, as you see fit here. I want to make sure everyone gets a chance to have input here. I am personally, I believe we, the special election, I think, at this point in time, given the cost and the timing of it, coming late, late fall, is really not going to serve this community much purpose, I believe, given the momentum and, and the projects already in the mix and the, and the things that we've got going on in the community. I believe that would be a disservice to the community to, to put this off, the decision to put that off for that kind of timeframe. And I'm really not interested personally in, in a kind of a caretaker role as, as a mayor to service, serve, you know, just as basically a, someone to run the meetings until next, next April to have a full, full-scale regular election. So I'd be very interested in, I believe there's very qualified folks in existence on this, on this body, and I'd be very happy to discuss it as we move forward here tonight. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to the rest of the gentlemen, and we'll take one as we get.
I'll start. Steve?
It's my position that I would not favor a special election because of the cost and the, the timing. You would elect somebody to serve for four months, so it doesn't seem time well spent. So, I would, my preference would be to find somebody who would want to be the mayor from one of the six aldermen that are sitting up here.
Right, in order, Ken? Dan?
It's also my preference, I'm, I'm in agreement with Alderman Gale and Alderman Kirkowski as well. The election would not serve the citizens in its best interest for four months and then turn around and do it again. I do believe an appointment off the council is prudent. I think it will serve this community best. The six individuals up here are those most connected to what's been going on and are best qualified to keep the continuity that has been going on in the city for the last 10 years continued. So I, I do feel we should lead with our best people as, as far as knowledge goes within the city, and I think they exist up here. And as the city administrator alluded to upon the mayor's resignation, it is business as usual in Oak Creek. We will continue to move forward. I've been through a transition like this once before, unfortunately, and we did step up to the plate. You have a remarkable team up here that tend to get things done together, so I trust, I trust their decision-making up here.
Mark?
First of all, I'd like to make an opening statement. If we do decide to appoint from the council, everybody that's in the audience, as well as the rest of the citizens of Oak Creek that is maybe watching this, should know that any one of the council member here is, that's here tonight, is probably be well-qualified to take over the mayor's position. But, there are some other things that come to light if we follow that road. First of all, as our city attorney mentioned, the, the alderman who steps forward in a, in a temporary position gives up their aldermanic seat. So then, we create the atmosphere where this council has to go search for aldermen, a person that wants to be alderman, through the volunteer basis or whatever, to fill out that alderman's term. After the election in April, whoever is appointed to be alderman for whatever district it happens to be, the council president has committee assignments to fill and whatnot, and I don't feel it's very prudent to put somebody in that position that really is not prepared for it. Third, I would like to express that having the council here intact, where, and everybody here is very knowledgeable about, about all of the developments, all of the coming developments that are coming in Oak Creek, plays out very well with the people that are sitting up here. And goes again, you want to put somebody in the mix here that hasn't been involved, comes out of the community, probably very uninformed, I don't want to see that happen either. Third, if we put somebody in here from the council, Ken expressed a little bit earlier that whoever ends up being the mayor, it's more or less a figurehead position for the remainder of Mr. Scafidi's term. The council up here delegates policy through our votes, not that the mayor is unimportant, but doesn't pay as, play as strategic a role as the council members do in our city. And last, but not least, if we put somebody in there from the council that is willing to take the position of temporary mayor, it may tend to prejudice the fall election coming up, or the next spring election for that very office. And I don't think anyone wants to see that happen. I sure as heck wouldn't want to thwart anybody's ambitions to run for mayor next fall and ultimately participate in the election next spring. That's about all I got.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, my position would be, the first two aldermen that spoke tonight, I support their position. I do not support a special election. There's no need to rush it. You're talking November versus April. Save the city a few bucks. There are people up here that I've worked with for a long time. There are qualified people up here to take that position temporarily, and I have full confidence that this, this spot will be fulfilled if we, if we appoint somebody from the present council. I do have a question for the city attorney as far as the, if we do that, if we take an alderman and put him in the temporary mayoral seat, do we, what is the obligation level, or how are we compelled to fill that appointment? I, I've gone through this before, okay? And you have people apply for the aldermanic position. Let's just say, for argument's sake, that we get one or two people that apply for the position, and we don't feel that they, they are qualified for that position. Are we compelled to fill that with a candidate that we don't like, or can we leave that position open? How does that read? That's my main concern, that we won't have a qualified person to fill the aldermanic seat.
Well, I would say two things, Alderman Toman. One, that's a matter that if it occurred such that there was an appointment of a sitting council member tonight, then we would be able to put either at a special common council meeting before the next regular council meeting, two weeks from now, or at the next regular council meeting, that matter on the agenda to discuss the method and manner, and probably then to take into consideration what you're talking about, a process in terms of filling that vacancy, that aldermanic vacancy, to account for that possibility. So, we could explore that further.
Okay, so you're not, that's not a definitive answer then? We chose not to fill it, could it stay open? You're not sure?
Oh, no. I think there's an obligation to fill by appointment.
It would have to be filled?
Yes, we would, yes.
Even though, even though, for argument's sake, we would only have one applicant, and we wouldn't feel that that person is qualified?
I'm not saying that we'd have to fill it with that applicant.
Like, it's at our discretion.
It would be up to the council, and we would probably try to ensure that we vet that out as part of the process that the council determines.
Yeah. That's, that's a big concern for me, because if you have one applicant and we don't feel he's qua, he or she is qualified, there's going to be some very important votes that come in front of this council. I've seen that play out in the past, where we didn't have a large pool to choose from, so that is a concern for me. I do, I do support the appointment for the mayoral position within this council.
Chris?
I concur with Alderman Toman and Bukiewicz and Kirkowski. I, I think within the body, we have a candidate that we are all well-versed and, and ready to go to work. I think appointing somebody outside of the council is, I understand where Alderman Verhaelen's going, but I, I'm not overly concerned that that's going to play into, you know, how the elections, uh, fall, fall into place.
Okay, thanks, Chris. That said, I, I think it's fairly clear we're going to, I think, take a couple options off the table straight away and move on to probably a consideration of a council appointment from, directly from the body that's presently sitting. And from that standpoint, I think District 2 Alderman Bukiewicz, I think, is going to be a, a, a fine choice to succeed Mayor Scafidi in terms of the final year of that, his, his upcoming term, or his current term. I think Dan has, has the experience. He knows the staff, he knows the folks of the community, he knows the development of the community. I think he can provide the leadership the city's going to need over the next year to get us into the next election cycle. I think he's very well-qualified, he's expressed an interest already in exploring the opportunity next year, and I'd be happy to move forward on that front, from my standpoint.
Need a second on that?
It's not a motion, but...
Oh, it's not a motion.
Any other commentary or...
Formal nomination.
Yeah, we have to discuss how we want to actually, want to actually have a formal nomination along those lines. Melissa has a little bit of a addendum to a nomination in terms of an effective date and...
I can suggest options to the council, and certainly it's your discretion to decide how you wanted to proceed, but if there were consideration to appoint a current member of the common council, it certainly would be prudent to open the floor for nominations. And if there's further discussion first, or beyond that, then there would be a motion to close the nominations procedurally, then we would have a vote. It would be a verbal vote, it's not a paper or written vote, and I would recommend that any motion to confirm any appointment as mayor to complete the term of office, which expires April 17th of 2018, would include an effective date, which could be tomorrow, March 8th, 2017, at 8:00 a.m., or whatever the council chooses. But, I think that it would be important to set those parameters, and I think it's necessary to set an effective date and time.
Any other discussion from the council, Melissa?
Just one comment. One more comment. The other option, I guess, that, that I was moving toward would have, would have been to appoint somebody from the outside, like we did after Mayor Bolander passed away. Alderman Fekler, at that time, stepped in as the interim mayor, wasn't a sitting elected official, proved to be a real smooth transition. That being said, it looks like we're going to move forward, appointing a fellow council member up here, and if that's the way it goes, I'm, I'm going to support and, and work with whoever becomes mayor to the best of my ability.
All right, then, I believe, the protocol, then, we'll, I'll make it formal, that we'll open the floor to nominations for, placing to fill the remaining term of Mayor Scafidi.
Guzekowski makes a nominate, uh, nominates Dan Bukiewicz to fulfill the term of mayor effective Wednesday, March 8th, 8:00 a.m., to expire on election day of 2018.
April 17th.
Clear with that, Chris? Gale, second.
Is it just a nomination, just to be clear? Or is that a motion?
Motion.
Sorry.
All right.
Any other, I want to hear any other motions for a nomination. Hang on, then, we'll close the floor to nominations. We'll have a verbal voice vote to confirm that nomination, the appointment. Roll call from the clerk.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Congratulations, Dan.
Thank you. Can I have a quick word?
Yes, you can.
I'd like to thank the council for their belief and trust in me to continue to lead this city in the fashion it's accustomed to. I will do my best to serve the citizens for the remainder of Mayor Scafidi's term, and I am truly confident it will be business as usual in Oak Creek. Thank you.
Thanks, Danny. Barb?
Good evening.
Item number seven, informational, summarized treasurer's report on the investment and banking accounts for the month ended January 31st, 2017.
As I mentioned last month, I was going to begin preparing a treasurer's report monthly and presented at the first meeting of every month. So last month, I explained how the, the report, what the report meant, and, you know, how it kind of worked. So this month, I shortened it a little bit and just included in the report just the, the numbers, beginning balance, ending balance, interest earned, and rate of return. As you can see, the total treasury at the end of January, January 31st, 2017, is $60,037,472.66. I also included a section for tax collections. For the month of January, we collected just over $23 million, about 31% of the total tax levied. Any questions?
Any questions for Barb? Funny. Barb, once again, appreciate your work you've done on this. Is this available on the city's website, Barb?
Um, I believe Leslie was going to put it up last month, so I, I think it's up there and after tonight's meeting.
There's nothing sensitive on here that we need to...
No.
All right, great. Information.
Is there anything else, any other suggestions, or anything else you'd like to have included in the report? Or does this...
Just to reiterate the fact that $60 million is not, $60 million is spendable money.
It is not spendable. It is not spendable.
So, that's the overriding factor. Not spendable. Great, thanks for the information, Barb.
Thank you.
Leslie, we'll, we'll make sure that's there if it's not already. Item number eight is to consider a motion to approve the vendor's summary report in the amount of $389,921.77. Bridgette, anything to add to that? Any questions from Bridgette from the council? Motion on item number eight, then?
Kirkowski make a motion to approve the vendor's summary, summary report in the amount of $389,921.77.
Guzekowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bukiewicz.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Community development, item number nine. We're going to consider ordinance number 2844, approving the conditions and restrictions for a conditional use permit for the property at 500 West Opus Drive, allowing for the development of freight terminal with two underground fuel storage tanks and access to 5,000 gallons and outdoor storage of Dolly equipment as accessory uses. And just a reminder of things, I, if anyone else in the community wishes to speak on this particular topic, where there's forms in the back to fill out to address to the clerk, and we'll go from there. Just a couple points of order, obviously, we have quite a few folks want to share their views on this, so try and keep it, we'll keep it... views on this, so try and keep it, we'll keep it, we'll employ the timer, 23-minute commentary, keep it civil, maintain some decor, and obviously, in the chamber, it'd be a great idea. No comments on behalf of someone else. If you're going to speak, speak your, your views. From that standpoint, I think, moving forward, we'll read a few, sorry, Mike.
Doug, do you want to give us the background on the original ordinance versus, I think that would be helpful for the public?
Sure, I mean, just to give a, a very brief background on the events that have led us here this evening, at their meeting of January 17th of this year, the common council adopted an ordinance, ordinance 2837, which approved the conditional use permit that would allow for the development of the freight terminal, which included the two underground fuel tanks for this property. Now typically, conditions and restrictions would then, would have been adopted as part of that initial ordinance, but since the planning commission had recommended that the conditional use permit not be issued, they did not prepare, nor did they review any conditions and restrictions. So subsequent to the adoption of the ordinance approving the conditional use permit, the common council directed the planning commission to go back and to review and forward back to them a separate set of conditions and restrictions, that those conditions and restrictions, which were reviewed by the, the planning commission at their last meeting, are what is before you this evening as for consideration as ordinance 2844. Depending on the council's pleasure, we can certainly go through some of those and highlight potentially where some of those conditions and restrictions have perhaps been a little bit different than what you typically have seen for other conditional use permits. I'd be happy to do that, if, if that's what the council would like. If not, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council had. Again, this is not necessarily a public hearing. The public hearing was held in accordance with the, the initial ordinance, but I understand that public testimony will be, will be taken for the council's directive.
Doug, it may be useful, just for expedient sake, if you want to kind of hit some of the high points of recent additions to the conditions and restrictions, maybe items that were of mixed opinion or contention at, at the planning commission meeting, maybe that were up for a little more debate than others?
Sure, absolutely. If, we'll go to the, the exhibit A, which contains those conditions and restrictions. Under exhibit, under section 2F, one of the things that has been added to these conditions and restrictions is a requirement for a public access and trail easement, minimum of 20 feet in width on the west property line to be granted. This is a trail segment that is shown on the parking and space plan for the city of Oak Creek. This would require the property owner to provide an easement for that, so at a point when it was constructed in the future, we'd have the access rights for that. Section H, also under section, item number two, that all intersection improvements, including traffic signals at the intersection of Opus Drive and Oakwood Road, shall be designed, upgraded, and installed per the approved development agreements. And at the cost for such design, upgrades, and installation shall be the responsibility of the applicant and/or property owners. Under 3L, it reiterates that the trucks utilizing this facility shall adhere to all posted traffic signs and regulations, and further specifies that trucks entering and exiting this site shall not utilize West Oakwood Road west of its intersection with South Opus Drive if and until such time as the posted traffic signs and regulations are altered. Moving on to item 5J, respect to landscaping and berms, it says that landscape berms at heights to shield headlights shall be incorporated into the landscape plans for the southwest portion of the property, along the residential properties to the east and Oakwood Road to the south. And it goes on to further identify the standards for landscaping for those areas, that being a one tree and five shrubs for every 35 linear feet of fencing along the proposed 25-foot wide public access and trail easement in the west property line. Section N of that same, item four, that landscaping and screen fences shall be installed and maintained in accordance with the approved landscaping plan. Also says the screen fence shall be installed on the south side of the property immediately across from the entrance to the site, to shield vehicle headlights from the residential properties to the south. And just by way of some, some summary, there was a, some testimony at the planning commission meeting about potentially having trucks exiting the facility, having their headlights being disruptive to some of the residential properties on Oakwood Road. As part of these conditions and restrictions, there would be a shield fence essentially put up, which would mitigate that impact. Moving on to section eight, maintenance and operation, under section E, that exterior lights shall be extinguished or reduced to a maximum of 50% in areas not actively in use, and reduced to levels deemed necessary, I'm, I'm sorry, essential for safety and security in areas in active use. Section eight says no, at no point on the boundary of a residence or business district shall the sound intensity level of any individual operation, other than the operation of motor vehicles or other mobile equipment, exceed 58 and 62 decibels respectively during normal operations. And that is just a reflection of our, our code for how the city deals with noise.
62 decibels, Doug, just for description for the audience, is what?
Uh, what, I did look that up, there was.
Conversational tone at the property border?
Right, it, it's not excessive by any means. Under section I, four, we're dealing with the idling of equipment and vehicles that's limited to five minutes in any one-hour period, with following exceptions, idling necessary for diagnostic or inspection purposes, idling to operate the frosters, heaters, or conditioners, or to prevent a safety or health emergency. Says that vehicles may idle up to 15 minutes in any one-hour period if the outside air temperature is 32 degrees Fahrenheit or below, or 80 degrees Fahrenheit and above. And under item four, this was a change from the initial drafts of the planning commission's conditions and restrictions, that the zoning administrator or designee shall be permitted access to the premises and structures during reasonable hours to make sure that those inspections as deemed necessary for the city, to ensure compliance with those conditions and restrictions. Section J, air pollution controls shall be instituted in accordance with section 17.80802 of the municipal code and in conformance with all state and federal regulations. Section K, with respect to security fences and associated gates, that they shall be subject to planning commission approval for location, material, and opacity. They shall not exceed 10 feet in height. They shall not incorporate barbed wire in any portion adjacent to a residential district line or residential use, and shall be maintained in a structurally sound, safe, and attractive condition. Under section L, the outdoor storage of equipment shall be limited to dolly equipment in designated parking areas as approved by the planning commission. No other outdoor storage, excluding vehicles and semi-trailers used in conjunction with the operation of the business parked in designated parking areas approved by the planning commission as permitted. Section M, with respect to fuel tanks, they shall be installed, maintained, inspected, enclosed, or removed per state Department of Agricultural, Trade, and Consumer Protection. Wisconsin DNR fire codes and federal regulations also calls for a containment plan to be submitted to the city for review and approval prior to installation. It also says the city shall be provided 48 hours' advance notice for, of installation, annual or required state and federal inspections, maintenance which require a state and/or federal permitting, replacement, or closure removal, and shall be provided access to the site for observation of such activities. And those were really the, some of the departures from your typical conditions and restrictions that would have been, that the city has issued for other uses requiring CUPs in the past.
Thank you, Doug. I know we had a robust discussion at planning commission last week on this.
We did.
Topic. So with that said, I think we'll take the public commentary first, and then we'll go forward from that. There are a number of folks who have expressed an interest to have their comments read into the record. Kirk will start that, and I'll maybe relieve her along the way, but.
No problem.
Great.
I have a comment from Mary Kay Pierce at 421 West Trillium Terrace. Have you considered how the increased tandem truck traffic will affect the Racine Communiters, or how, when Ryan Road Bridge is torn down and trucks will have to go past Drexel Town A comment from Jacqueline Patton, 111 East State's Place. Is commercial zoning the same for all types of businesses, or are there three different types of categories? Are the categories ever allowed to be changed in accordance with needs and requirements?
Doug, is there a quick answer to that?
Commercial zoning, I mean, and this isn't manufacturing zoning, be clear. There's only one base zoning for manufacturing. The city's considering a, amending the code to allow for light manufacturing, but that's not neither here nor there with respect to this issue. There are multiple zoning categories for commercial, depending on some of the levels of different use, but there is only one for manufacturing.
I have a comment from Mark Grimshid, Grimshide, 520 West Oakwood Road. I've been a resident of Oak Creek for 29 years. I knew a business park was in the making since 2002. The truck terminal does not belong here. This truck terminal will not generate jobs. They will fill these jobs with the people from 27th and Elm location. If the planning commission did their homework, they would realize what a bad fit this is for the Opus location. The planning commission spends more time on signage issues than it does about the pollution, the traffic, the noise that the FedEx truck terminal will generate. I have a comment from Antoinette Grimshide, 520 West Oakwood Road. I apologize for what I do to names. There are many other locations in Oak Creek that are better suited for FedEx. The Opus area is supposed to be a business park, not an extra-large truck terminal. This will impact all the residents that are surrounding this terminal. Please listen to the citizens of Oak Creek. This truck, truck terminal is wrong on so many levels. My biggest complaint is the noise. It's not just the movers with the backup beeping, it's also the loads being dropped into the semis, it's the air brakes constantly being applied. I sat by the FedEx terminal on 27th and Oakwood, the traffic and the noise was extremely loud, couldn't hold a conversation with that noise. Please reconsider all the facts that are put in front of you tonight, and make a vote for the residents of Oak Creek. I have a comment from Lisa Magnus, 564 East Jordan Lane. As with all real estate, location, 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 this is not the right location for this type of development. There are a number of other land options to consider, and most, and must be in order to preserve the integrity of our city. Points against, pardon me, this development include the extensive level of traffic on Howland Ryan, wear and tear on the roads, pollution, noise, air light. We already have the polluting coal plant to the east, an explosive safety threat of PPG to the west. With this in mind, please vote no for this FedEx development, find a new home for it instead. I have a comment from Debbie Castellanos, 911 West Oakwood Road. I'm not in favor of the FedEx trucking terminal, I think there must be a better location for this. The traffic, noise, and pollution will be bad for the neighboring subdivisions. I have attachment, a comment from Judy Jeromezki, 564 East Jordan Lane. I am a new resident of Oak Creek. I moved here from New Berlin. I was graciously welcomed by my neighbors and community. The additions to the Drexel Town Square Center make this city an even more wonderful place to live. The FedEx terminal in our residential neighborhood will take the fun, enjoyment, and safety out of this neighborhood. Having 190 double semis drive-through twice a day will increase traffic on Howl, making it more difficult for residents to run basic errands, and to go out to breakfast, lunch, and dinner at the great new restaurants in the area. The local restaurants and other businesses will suffer as a result. Additionally, having the double semis in our area will also pose a danger to pedestrians and children. Although I think Oak Creek, excuse me, Oak Creek would be a great place for FedEx, many of us feel it does not belong in a residential neighborhood. We have several other areas that are available but are not residential. Please vote no to this terminal, so we can keep our neighborhood. I love my new city, please don't make me regret moving here. If this does not pass, can we rezone this area so don't we, so we don't have this issue in the future? Again, please vote no, save our neighborhood. Thank you for listening. I have two more. Barbara Berger, 9844 South Glenmore Court. Would any council member vote yes for the FedEx truck terminal if they lived in the surrounding area, such as Fairfield subdivision, English Air, Shepherd Hills, Oakwood Terrace, or Oakwood Road? My guess is no. And, okay. This is a comment from Predag Doronja, 9654 South Fox Run. I'm a mechanical nuclear engineer, I majored in engines with internal combustion, and I participated in diesel engine testing. I'm not trying to impress you with the upper statement, but rather to familiarize you that my opinion about the future FedEx garage plan to be established in Oak Creek is not based on my feelings, but rather on scientific knowledge. Diesel engines, not like gasoline engine, operate using fuel we can call oil or better naphtha. Naphtha is used in the same state it is obtained from the earth, with all impurities coming from it. Comparing to gasoline, it is more inert to higher temperatures, therefore, when used in engines, it can be exposed to higher pressures and higher temperatures, providing thermodynamic cycles with much higher efficiency. So the higher pressures and temperatures, the cheaper the fuel, and better to say, higher the power we get from the engine, until we, with pressure and temperature, reach a point when the fuel starts burning, emitting smoke, containing poisonous gases. This power, we call smoking power, is not used in normal operation of engine. The vehicle designers stay slightly below this point, but during the vehicle expiration, it can be adjusted to higher levels. You all notice that when the truck driver slams the gas, we can observe a black smoke coming out of the exhaust stack. It contains poison, not just impurities and carbon monoxide. Now you bring that poison generator to the highly populated park of, part of Oak Creek, my neighborhood, I do not care about myself, but there are children, many children and other members of our families living in here, walking around, jogging, bicycling. Should I bring them among the poison generator, which will gnaw on their health and their lives? Should our children wiggle among these future trucks while doing these activities? Another thing is noise. Would you allow me to tape that noise that these trucks will produce and broadcast in your neighborhood day and night, and roads? These trucks will very soon cause more damage to them, the benefits of taxes we may enjoy. You think that those roads are responsibility of our county, but do not forget that, at the end, the county will use our tax money for their maintenance. I understand your philosophy to have more businesses in Oak Creek, but can't we be a bit choosier? There are many other opportunities around. Barbara Berger, 9844, South Glenmore Court. I just thought I read it, my apologies. My understanding is that no jobs are created by allowing FedEx into Oak Creek, that they are moving existing employees from Franklin. And Barbara Berger, 9844 South Glenmore Court. Has anyone talked about legal action for loss of property value due to the presence of FedEx and ramifications that come with it?
Great, thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
We have a, maybe 10 folks who want to speak there, so we'll try and keep this orderly. I'll, I'll name a couple, so you guys, you folks can kind of queue up, so we can make this as expeditious as possible and keep it flowing. Brian Randall, 33 East Kilborn Avenue. We'll have Jim McDonough and Louis Blau speak after that. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the common council. I'm Attorney Brian Randall, 330 East Kilborn Avenue, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, here on behalf of the developer and the end user, FedEx Freight. We do have a very brief slideshow presentation. It's brief, 10 slides, I think the most valuable of which, though, we have the site plan, just so if people have questions about what we're showing and laying out. So I think we're going to move past slide number one right off the bat. As I introduced, well, I was going to say, my name's Brian Randall, we have Mike Bauer here, who's from the.
One second. Brief presentation, it's for the benefit of the entire audience.
And, and we don't anticipate the four people speaking, but I will be as brief as possible, and to the extent we could speak for 12 minutes, we won't take 12 minutes. Mike Bauer is here, Carl Ruda Bush, and Trina Murphy from FedEx Freight. Go on, we, we're on the clock. Again, the last time we presented, over a month ago, these are the project particulars, 48-acre site on Opus Drive, 115,000-square-foot building. The jobs, as stated in our project cost, that's actually an old number, 29 and a half million, because as we'll show later, with the number of these conditions and complying with them, our project cost has gone up to over $30 million. But those, again, are the particulars, we haven't changed the project since we last presented. Just to orient everyone, Opus Drive, while Opus Drive itself is not really shown on there, it's just north of Oakwood, there it is, it's shown on, on the lower part of that map, the, the red signifier is where the site is, and we have Howell Avenue to the east, and then, of course, on that other map, the Ryan Road interchange is where a number of the trucks ultimately will go to get on northbound and southbound I-94. This is the zoning map, there are a couple of questions, I even heard from the written comments about zoning, and this, we just wanted to show, it's the city's map, it's not something that we generated, but the red identifier shows that we are in the purple section, which, as Mr. Seymour mentioned, is the M1 manufacturing zoning, and that's pretty much what surrounds this property, consistent with your comprehensive plan, but the zoning itself is M1. South of Oakwood Road, there are some other colors, but my understanding is the planned development district for Oakview Business Park is consistent with M1 zoning generally, and, and those are separate zoning colors, but again, this area is master-planned for industrial-type uses.
Brian, just to point out, too, for Brian, just to point out too for the audience, just so, I'm not sure where the map is from, but for whatever reason Fairfield and English Air are not represented properly in terms of the coloring. So it gives a little different perspective on the density of housing around this particular project site, so just FYI.
Understood. And my understanding is it's a map from the city, but I know those maps are constantly evolving, so may have been updated in certain areas. We can go to the next slide. This is the site plan, something that many of you have generally seen, although there is one new addition on the far west, kind of a yellow pathway that's intended to signify the 20-foot easement that we'll be dedicating to the city per one of the staff conditions and as approved by the plan commission. The site plan, just by a quick way of recap, shows how our site lays out with the building, which is the long and narrow section toward the top. And we have employee parking right beside the wetlands. In the middle of the site, we have wetlands that we are working around and we will be able to preserve those as well as in the northwest corner of the site. There is a very small driveway on the far left or the west side going down to Oakwood Road. That is an emergency access only. One of the conditions in fact requires it, and it was originally requested by the fire department. That is again for emergency vehicles. The fire department either will have lock key for that or the gate will be breakaway. We have the retention pond down in that southwest corner of the area or of the site, excuse me. We will manage all of our stormwater on site as is required. And then the wetlands in the far northwest corner, again, will be preserved and we will work around those. We can come back to that with any questions, but this is just a slightly different plan with showing the landscaping. Again, the bike path easement on the far west, we have a number of the berms and trees and bushes that are first required by code, but they've actually been enhanced per the conditions required for this project. In particular, they are on the south side of our property, on the north side of Opus Drive. I forgot, do we have access to use the cursor? Okay, I can't point where that cursor is. But along Opus Drive, you can see a lot of green, which is thereby designed to then shield the Oakwood Road properties to the south of us. But as mentioned in the staff conditions, we are also directly opposite of our driveway proposing, or at least it was proposed, and we've agreed to put in a wooden fence slats pretty, without spacing, so that the truck headlights will be blocked going to the south where those Oakwood Road properties are. Over on the west side, where the stormwater pond is, and in fact, I think the McDonhoffs are here this evening. I've been talking to them. They've always had questions about the fence and the proximity of their home and the landscaping, and we're confident that we can work with the staff requirement of birmingham and landscaping and of course, the safety and security we need for a fence to move that fence in so that it's not right on top of their property line because their house is relatively close. But long story short, the birmingham, the landscaping, that's all required and you can see it showing on the perimeters. The one thing that's not shown while we have on the far west, the yellow bike path easement is showing, we don't have the landscaping overlaid on that, but as staff mentioned, there will be bike path landscaping within that easement and then our fence and then our facility. We can go to the next one. Just by way of a quick update overview, we're not seeking any TIF incentive for this, although we are in TID 8. So that's I think an important distinction. We are in the TIF district. We didn't ask for it. It's a number of years old, but according to the documents published by the city late last year, TID 8 should retire in 2029. We believe that this increment going into the TIF district will enable the city to retire that early, put all of the properties back on the tax rolls. That is certainly a matter of finance that we don't know how the city's numbers are working, but we're in the TIF district, but we're not seeking any incentives whatsoever. On top of that however, we are putting in a number of off-site improvements that are not coming out of the TIF district and are not coming out of the city's general fund. Those include the Opus Drive final asphalt lift, a redundant water main loop that will improve water quality for the sanitary water, relocate a sewer main, a sanitary sewer, as well as the aforementioned Opus and Oakwood stop signal. That's about a $250,000 design and intersection redo plus the equipment. The conditions, I think, Mr. Chair, you mentioned a number of extra and additional conditions as what might be typical. We have 89 total in this document. And as we've really looked at what those costs will be, it's about a million and a half dollars of increased expenses that we are committing to this project. We are pleased to have the opportunity to meet with the neighbors. Alderman Gill was assisting us in facilitating that. We had it over a week ago in the multipurpose room. Was a very nice session for us to explain the project, answer the questions. We know there are still many more questions, but it was good to have that opportunity and we appreciate the city enabling us to do that and this great facility. And the plan commission last week voted five to one to recommend this very thorough document. Do we have any other slides? I'm just going to breeze past these. We've kind of really focused on these when I talked about the site plan, but we have the landscaping screaming. Storage restrictions, we don't have outdoor stockpiles of anything. We don't have shipping containers sitting on the site. The parking restrictions, we have the employee parking separate from the yard. Lighting restrictions are in the document. Noise restrictions are in the document. We've reviewed those with the FedEx operations team and they are able to comply with what staff thoroughly researched and put into this document. That includes the idle time restrictions. I think it's a five-minute standard. There are certain deviations when weather allows for it, but the FedEx company idle time restrictions are ones that we can comply with what's in this document. And finally, on the fuel tanks, I think there was a lot of question about the 20,000 gallon underground storage tanks. We've read the requirements about a fuel tank containment plan. We've conferred with the fire department and we've also checked the Wisconsin state regulations and the EPA. So we're confident that the facilities we put underground will be installed, maintained, and operated appropriately. And then finally, the off-site conditions, I think I've talked about all of those items, so I don't need to dwell on them again in the interest of time. Traffic flow restrictions, just wanted to recognize, we understand the requirement of trucks can't go westbound on Oakwood. We believe that that will be something we will absolutely be able to adhere to because this facility is all FedEx employees, all FedEx-owned equipment. So all the trucks will be identifiable and the drivers will be accountable to our operations team. So we know that neighbors will be watching. We know that the police department can watch, but we are confident that from the get-go, our drivers are going to do the right thing, follow the rules, and that's because their job depends on it.
Good, thank you, Brian.
Thank you for your time. We'll be happy to answer any questions and really appreciate this opportunity.
McDonough was first up? Ms. McDonough? You're good? Jim lives at 622 West Oakwood Road, just for record. Louis Blau? Welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Louis Blau. I live on 637 West Oakwood Road. In the previous meetings, I keep hearing about jobs. So it must be a good thing, right? Well, FedEx is just moving across the street into Oakwood from Franklin. So all people that are working there are parking in a different lot, and that's all. And if there's any jobs added, it can't be much. It might be more beneficial for Oak Creek to allow Opus to put buildings in and get new companies into Oak Creek with probably more job opportunities. And they are not, and they are not going to put any more pollution stress and noise on the neighborhood than FedEx already is doing. Because within the amount of trucks they will bring to our neighborhood, we are putting this whole area under stress and probably find out that it can't even handle it. I think that the council needs to consider not only income, but also look at the foundation of this community. Real people with real needs and real concerns. We all need to take care of our own properties to make Oak Creek the great place to live in, but also need to stand up for the things that are wrong for our neighborhoods. And FedEx is wrong. It does not fit in the community with kids and our property so close. Thank you.
Thank you for your kindness. Keep the clapping to the minimum, please. Elise Wetzel, next? Elise?
Elise Wetzel, 574 West Oakwood Road. First off, I just want to say that none of us are trying to discredit the legitimacy of FedEx. We all know who it is. We have nothing against the company. We're against the placement of something so huge, so close to all of our homes, the traffic, the safety, the health, and the list goes on. We're proactive concerned citizens of this area. We were told 382 trips, 191 in, 191 out, and that's the number for now. But upon further looking, when there is a phase two that turns into 534 truck trips a day, 426 employee trips a day. We come from a very mixed demographic within just this half-mile radius that we have all worked tirelessly together to notify, many of whom, like myself, are parents with young children and children in general, and this is going to cause an increase in traffic to our area, whether individual or commercial. Oakwood Road already has a speeding issue. We're 25 miles an hour. We have children all over this area waiting every day to get on and off their school buses. And personally, I have witnessed employees leaving Opus Drive, flying down the road, cutting people off, passing, and now we're adding more employees to this. We as parents truly believe that this will have an everlasting effect on our families and our homes. Now you want to add 191 outbound semi trips during the morning shift when we have kids waiting for their buses with employees rushing to get to work, trucks holding up traffic, even though you're convinced that this traffic signal is the fix. Granted, truck traffic is prohibited westbound on Oakwood. It still happens. And yes, there are signage posted, but so is the speed limit sign. There are already four companies that may not all be associated with this business park, but we have four and some of which have been causing residence issues in neighboring subdivisions. Why add to it? Why cause more problems for your citizens? I'm not the only one that feels this way because we have an entire team of people who are fighting the good fight beside me. This is a quiet neighborhood, what's left of rural Oak Creek. You can build FedEx in Oak Creek, just not here, not in this business park. We have more land in other districts. And I've spent a good amount of time interacting with all of these residents in my neighborhood and others, and we're not against it. Again, we're against the lack of concern, the placement, and the notice from our city. The amazing people, you see them all? They're amazing. They're all sitting behind me as members of my community, our community, and your community. In all honesty, we feel betrayed and not just myself. I am speaking on behalf of everybody in this room.
Please, with the clapping, a little decorum. Thank you. Al Leicher, please.
Evening.
Name and address, please.
Al Leicher, 574 West Oakwood Road. When I purchased my home on Oakwood Road 30 years ago, I was well aware that this property would be developed at some point in time. And I was okay with the original plan until you guys changed all this conditional permit I and most of the voters seated behind me are not pleased with this proposal and feel that the common council should not vote in favor of this. I have attended every meeting that I have been invited to. Many of the voters behind me have spoken at those meetings with their concerns, and yet the board members have done a very poor job of addressing these. I really feel, get the feeling that some of you just do not care and are more concerned about the tax money that's being brought into the city's coffers. An estimated, what, $79,000 to $200,000? That's what the estimate is to come in. I mean, you look at all these voters back, you add up their property taxes, I'm sure it adds up to a lot more than that. And lastly, I'd like to thank all the voters that showed up here tonight. With elections in the near future, I would be more than willing to channel my efforts towards that in the event that this proposal is approved.
I think so. Please, with the clapping. I've warned you twice. No more clapping. We're taking commentary. Maintain the decorum in the council chambers, please. Heleni Damanos.
Hi, Heleni Damanos, 1210 Dover Drive. I will be, I will read really quickly. That way I could respect the time and other, okay, speakers.
Heleni.
What?
Brayden.
Hello, hello, okay. So I'm not here tonight to discredit the city of Oak Creek or FedEx. I'm here to represent myself, my family, and my community. After reviewing previous minutes, it's clear that several officials, including the planning commission and council members, do not believe this project is a fit for the sector of Oak Creek. There are a great number of citizens, including myself, that feel strongly as they do because there's a lot of validity, excuse me, in our criticisms. As city officials, I hope you're proud that we are here. Oak Creek Vision states it wants to be connected to our community and believes some key success are safe, proactive, and engaged community. You want us to play a strategic role in the planning and future of our city. Your overwhelming turnout tonight indicates that you are right. We should hold a strategic role in Oak Creek's future. This experience is a lesson to us all, so if we want to live in the city, raise our children in this city, and improve our quality of life, we should set higher standards for ourselves and our community, even for those that can't be here tonight or don't have a voice. You should be proud of the people you represent and embrace your perspectives and criticism. There is not enough oversight guarantee FedEx will follow any conditions you set forth. Unless you regulate on a consistent basis, which you can't guarantee, they will go off course. When a company of this size and nature makes a home in our neighborhood, they will be scrutinized as other freight terminals in our area have been scrutinized. I assure you that the scrutiny will be a burden on the city. Even though there was a public notification for this facility, you made sure you notified the minimum amount of people you required to. The city foolishly felt the impact of this facility would be of no interest to us or you felt it should be of no interest to us. This doesn't seem to fit Oak Creek's values of mutual respect and accountability. So there were a lot of answered questions in the last two meetings unanswered. They should have reports for levels of chemical emissions, traffic reports, decibel readings, and safety reports from other facilities. Secondly, Oakwood's girth and current traffic use is no match for the amount of traffic in phase one and especially for phase two. Although FedEx may be meeting minimum EPA standards, they have not yet adopted advanced pollution control options, or they may have not adopted advanced pollution control options yet. Idling can be a serious problem if it's not regulated. Unfortunately, the state of Wisconsin, including the state of Oak Creek, do not have regulations for no idling. There is no penalty for idling as long as they want, no state or local regulations to enforce cleaner air. The subsections did not mention any fines or penalties for failing to adhere to these conditions. It was not clear as to who enforces these regulations. It is much easier for freight terminals to pay fines. For many of them, it is the cost of doing business. You cannot implement enough conditions and restrictions to make this an acceptable occasion for this project, even if several government agencies pay them an annual visit. Even with the highest standards, EPA mandates, the chemicals emitted from these trucks' exhaust and secondary chemical reactions from the atmosphere are still a concern to organizations like the EPA, the World Health Organization, several air quality control groups, and the International Agency for Research on Cancer. Clean diesel trucks only account for about 40% of the trucks on the road. They still consider most trucks and vehicles to be great contributors to the demise of human health. An additional threat is the road dust that will generate, creating additional particle matter that is harmful. Oak Creek is exposed to enough industry pollution, we certainly don't need more in our backyard. The WHO, or World Health Organization, and the International Agency for Research on Cancer, say that these chemicals are class one carcinogens, and class one carcinogens are not safe at any level. They pose a health risk to all people, especially your children, and the immunocompromised. This is by far my most, my greatest concern. There is a long list of carcinogen-related illnesses, which I won't mention. They are scientifically linked, not speculated, to freight transportation vehicles. Trucks accounted for 46 of the freight-related nitrogen and oxide emissions in 2005, the largest share of any single motor transportation, and they account for 70% of the total cancer risk from air pollution and 36% increase in lung cancer. Almost done. The city officials, your job is not to generate revenue or create projects like Drexel Council or IKEA. Your job should be to include looking out for the well-being of your citizens. We have enough industry pollution in our city. We have enough industry contributing to the smells I dislike, the trucks' vibrations I prefer not to feel while I'm in bed, or the startling sounds of mechanical rolling thunder while I'm trying to fall asleep. I know you can make better, safer, and financially sound choices that won't decrease our property values, and we're not interested in hearing about replacement businesses that would have been the lesser of two evils. Many of us feel you should consider rezoning the property and discontinue M1 zoning in this area because it is not inviting us to the community. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Maureen Williams. Megan Stewart will be next.
Maureen Williams, 991 West Leeds Court, English Air subdivision. I had a prepared statement that I was going to read, but it seems like most everyone has covered the concerns I have. So I'd just like to tell you a little bit about myself. A lot of concern has come up over the toxins that are released by diesel emissions. It is a great concern for me because I currently live with a rare autoimmune disease called myasthenia gravis. A toxin was released in the environment that confused my immune system and now my body attacks my own healthy tissues. Myasthenia gravis causes fatigue, or as I like to call it, my energy deprivation, muscle weakness, and temporary paralysis. A year and a half ago, my disease state was changed to treatment-resistant. I am no longer responding to any medications or treatments. This disease is brought on or acquired. I was not born with this disease. I encountered some toxin within the last 15 years of my life that caused my immune system to attack itself. Along the way, I've acquired four other autoimmune diseases. Along the way, I've acquired four other autoimmune diseases. I have celiac disease, Raynaud's syndrome, Sojan syndrome, and thyroid disease. I spend days, weeks, months in doctor's appointments and in treatments. There is no cure for this disease, and because only 75,000 people have this disease, no pharmaceutical company is interested in developing a treatment. I am a result of toxins in the atmosphere. I am financially, emotionally, physically burdened by this disease 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I am a mother, a daughter, a wife, a sister, an aunt, and standing here, I am barely physically able to stay on my feet. I am begging you not to move this forward. We do not need more people with autoimmune diseases. The risk of getting an autoimmune disease is greater than cancer, cardiopulmonary disease, one in 12. That is too great of a burden to put on any family, any community. Please vote no for the FedEx terminal. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Please. Megan? Welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name's Megan Stewart, my address is 598 West Oakwood Road. I had, my name made me a little familiar, I've sent a few emails, the only one that was kind enough to respond to me was Alderman Ken, thank you for doing so. Let's talk about the root and the real reason why we're all here. What's the core of this problem and this situation? It all boils down to money. The city of Oak Creek wants to make money, and I'm fighting to keep mine. By passing this permit and allowing FedEx, you are literally stealing money from my pocket and from the pockets of all the other residents in this room, as well as throughout the neighborhood. I'm going to paint a picture for you here. The real estate market in Oak Creek is popping right now. A lot of people want to come to Oak Creek because we have a great community. You folks have done a great job providing a wonderful school district, developing the community. As citizens, we have done a great job maintaining our properties, making it welcoming. Folks want to come and move here. For example, my mom, longtime Oak Creek resident, just put her home on the market two weeks ago because my father passed away. Within, right off the bat, she had multiple offers well above asking price. Now I ask you, what's going to happen to my property value when FedEx is in my backyard? What's going to happen to the property values of everyone in this room? I've done a lot of work to my house in the three years that I've lived there. It's not just my home, it is an investment, and you folks are stealing my investment and you're taking my future that I've worked hard to provide, as well as the futures of other folks within this room. Now, Alderman Dan, soon to be mayor, I believe you had mentioned that FedEx would be a great neighbor to us. I invite you, buy my house, be their neighbor. Do you want to buy my home? Let's make a deal. Who's going to want my home when FedEx is in the backyard? I have consulted an attorney, and I will be seeing what I can do as far as diminish property value of my home because it's going to plummet. And maybe there are other folks that will care to join me, and we could have a class action suit. I just want you to know that I'm not going to just bend over and let you take money from my wallet. I will fight to keep for what I've earned. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Please. John Brooks. Name and address for the record.
John Brooks, 9803 South Deer Path Drive. Thank you all for serving. I love my city, I am proud of my city, and I think that's why I have such a visceral gut reaction against this proposal. Again, it's been said, none of us is against FedEx, and we believe a proper home could be found for them. One of my biggest concerns is that this is in a TIF property. Again, FedEx is not asking for a handout, but Opus did, and we gave Opus money to develop a high-quality development that couldn't have happened otherwise with it not being subsidized. And for them, in turn, to turn that land that we have subsidized around to a truck terminal feels like a betrayal to me as a taxpayer. And so I'm asking that our community development coordinators, that they work closely with FedEx to find a far more suitable home for FedEx.
Thanks for your comments, John. Nancy Slovic will be followed by Ron Thiel. Nancy, name and address for the record.
Nancy Slovic, 851 East Mary Lane. And I want to thank you all for taking the time to hear our concerns regarding the proposed FedEx terminal relocating to Oak Creek. Having worked in the transportation industry for over a decade, specifically at a trucking terminal, my list of concerns regarding this proposal is long. Many of my concerns have already been voiced, others I know will be voiced coming up. What I would like to take the time to talk about tonight is this angle of job growth that's recently been talked about. Alderman Verhanen, you have been quoted to say, "I look at the flip side of it with the types of jobs they're going to provide," just about all the things, whether it's driving trucks, working in the maintenance building, working in the office, family sustaining jobs. My issue with statements like this is that it's taking a small nugget of truth and trying to sell it as a boulder, knowing that when the general public hears an elected official speak, most will take it as complete truth without stopping to think about the little details. So here's the issue that I take with this so-called job growth angle. FedEx is currently a fully staffed and functioning company. This is a relocation of a business, not a startup, not a new company that will need large amounts of jobs to be filled. Will there be jobs created with an expansion of the terminal? Yes. But will it be a small number? Sure. Most of which will probably not go to Oak Creek residents anyways. So when you go to vote this time, I urge you to stop and consider something. How many new jobs is worth what many Oak Creek residents are now going to be exposed to? Is a small number of jobs worth allowing a company that we know has many different types of pollution coming from it relocating into the backyards of your residents? How many jobs is it worth to have some of Oak Creek's youngest residents exposed to large amounts of diesel fumes, noise, and light, and other types of pollutions daily, while just being kids and playing in their own backyards? If a neighboring resident invites you to a backyard barbecue, would you go and enjoy your burger with a side of diesel fumes? Oak Creek is supposed to be moving forward, yes, I fully agree with that. Yet this terminal is going to be pushing many residents behind, not only in their health and their property values, but in their way of life as well. Many of these residents have spent a long time enjoying their neighborhoods, and now we're going to have to deal with the negative impact of this in so many ways. At some point, you have to decide what part of this relocation makes it worth putting your residents through this. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Ron? Ron Thiel, sorry. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is, um...
Ron, a little closer to the microphone, please.
Oh, sorry. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ron Thiel. I live at 9860 Glenmore Court, Oak Creek. I've lived in Oak Creek since 1980. Sorry, not a good speaker. My concern's what is wrong with this project. The traffic, traffic noise. 380 trucks a day. 525 later. 59 trucks on Howell Avenue in the 8:00 AM hour alone. Howell and Ryan Road congestion. That traffic light is bad enough right now. How long are you going to sit there to get through? That is also an emergency vehicle route. The firehouse is a half mile away. Who's going to take precedent? A truck sitting in the, in the intersection? You need to find a better site for this. 13th and Ryan Road has been mentioned. That is within a quarter of a mile of the freeway ramp, not two and a half or three miles of parading trucks through the city seven days a week. 500 homes, we estimate, are affected. 500 homes you are going to reduce the tax base on. How much does it take from 500 reduced tax bills that the city goes in the hole after FedEx pays them? And you, we are going to ask for reduced taxes 500 times, all the people in the neighborhoods mentioned. And I'm also wondering how the planning commission, which is part of this city, said that they didn't approve this, they didn't think this was a good site, and a handful of people are the reason why we're here tonight. They said, "No, we're going to go ahead and do this anyway." So a handful of people are going to affect 500 homes for 25 years. In 25 years, I'll be 86 years old. I don't know if I'll even live that long. So, this is a life sentence with FedEx in my backyard. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Rob. Hiram Buffington.
Name and address for the record, please. Hiram Buffington, 9651 South Fox Run, Fairfield subdivision. And I've made parts of this presentation twice already, but the facts remain. This operation by FedEx, and I know FedEx is a big company, they're wealthy, but the truth is that they get a pass on the noise because of the mobile source restriction. Now, we went through this with the planning commission, to no avail. They are locked up to be able to do whatever they want. Now, they had reached out to the neighbors, and I put some pointed questions to them, including the facility manager in Franklin. And I says, "Can you meet a 58 and 62 DBA limit?" And you know what his answer was? "I don't know." The same thing with the air emissions. There's a lot of hazardous air emissions in these diesels that are going to be idling. And so I said, "Okay." Being a professional engineer with 30 years' experience, you asked about experts in the audience, well, you're looking at one. And the truth is that I asked for a quarter of a million dollars put in escrow for a very simple reason. These guys aren't going to monitor the air quality, they're not going to monitor the noise levels around their operation, they haven't in the past, or at least they're not willing to admit that they have. So that recommendation is still on the table and should be addressed and not blown off. Quarter million in tax, in an interest-bearing escrow account, and at the end of 25 years, you can have it back if it's not spent. Now, if you don't measure, you can't control, and that's the truth. And there's not going to be any measurement here, there's not going to be any measurement of the idling standard. It's going to be up to the facility manager to decide about that. And the other question was the secondary containment. A lot of people, you know, in Fairfield, we're going to have to run the gauntlet every time we try to leave that subdivision, and that's the truth. And I don't think you want that on your conscience. Now, getting to just a little bit on the investment side, our subdivision alone is over 25 million in tax base, and there are several other subdivisions. Any diminution in those values is going to show up in revenue generated by the city. So we'll stack that up against the 30 million these guys are putting on the table. And I think, if you're any kind of an economist, no, you know that that is not a good deal. Now, the truth is that I think you need to rework your zoning map. I don't know if you heard, but over the last 50 years, there's been a decrease in the demand for manufacturing sites, and I think this community has too many parcels of land designated M1, and that's one problem that you need to address. So with that being said, I firmly disapprove of this, and I feel that this process has not worked because we have raised these things, these issues, and they've been blown off by FedEx and by this government in Oak Creek. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Hiram, last speaker would be Darren Grabowski.
Darren Grabowski, 9858 South Deer Path Drive. The folks behind me, they said it all, really, they stole my thunder. Ron did a great job of what he was saying about coming two and a half, three miles from Oakwood and Howell, all the way to the highway. There's other locations, it's just the optimal, optimal location for this place, big trucking terminal right there, you got all the residential. Seems like everything west of Howell, the 13th Street, all those three subdivisions, they're getting all kind of business parks in there and stuff like that. There's plenty of business parks throughout Oak Creek that have empty buildings or empty areas where this place could go. But I know they're getting the land cheap, obviously, so that's why they want to put it there. But they can save that on fuel costs if they move closer to the interstate. Dan, Steve, Mark, and Mike, I know you guys don't live in the area, you probably hardly ever travel Howell Avenue down there by Highway 100. Chris and Ken, I know they do, so obviously that's why they probably voted no. They know what it's going to bring to the city. Yeah, it's tax-based for the taxpayers to bring down our taxes, but it's going to bring our taxes up. It's a great site plan, just not that site, if you guys understand, it's just a horrible thing. I know you guys already voted it, the planning commission voted it down, then you guys came back and said, forget what the planning commission said, we think it's a good idea, the four aldermen, which don't live in that area. So you guys voted for it, so now technically you guys are just here voting on a site plan, not how everything's going to look outside. You know, if you guys could reconsider voting this down tonight, and maybe go back to the drawing board with Opus and FedEx or something, to see what you guys come up with a different site or area to go to, maybe closer to the interstate, you got 27th Street right across from the FedEx plant where it is now, way down on the end towards, like I say, wherever you enter the expressway there. I don't know, but I know the land is cheap for them, that's why they want to be there in the area. But Ron said it too, 500 residents, you know, are you guys not looking at what's behind us? There's a lot of people here, you know, they may not have been at that meeting when you guys voted for it, but they're here tonight because of late notice to them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Darren. That is all the, anybody else who didn't file a notice card that wanted to speak? Great, well, we'll wrap up the commentary period. Appreciate all the time that you have taken to engage yourselves in this, in this debate, that's the way the process works. We appreciate your time and concern. I'll open it up now for comments and questions from the council. Chris? Alderman Guzikowski. Oh, sorry, can I step in one time? Doug, can you go over a little bit on the, on the council report? The small correction in the last paragraph of the report on the, of Bridget?
Sure, I mean, with respect to the fiscal impact, there's actually two things at play there. I think Alderman Gale mentioned, or several people mentioned, this was in a TIF district. And maybe I can just take the opportunity to clarify one item. Opus did not receive financial assistance from the city for the development of this park, it's just merely within geographic boundaries of today. But being in a TIF district by state law, when the district is retired, the full taxes obviously accrue back to the city and its various funds, but the city is only allowed to capture 50% of that as far as growth in its tax levy. So while the number is there, and we did verify that, Ken, they are correct, but it's just a matter of the growth in the tax levy is not, would be half of what you see in that fiscal impact.
The incremental levy is actually half of what's shown there. Then that new tax the city could use to defray costs is half of what's... So with that said, Alderman Guzikowski.
Alderman Gale.
Oh, sorry, Alderman Guzikowski.
I want to hear what Alderman Guzikowski is going to say, but I need to excuse myself for a couple of minutes, so can we just take about a three-minute break?
Recession, really? Great, all right. Three-minute recess. Great, thank you, appreciate that. Now we have the floor up into the council for comments and questions on item number nine. Reminder that the item on the agenda is speaking to the conditions and restrictions for the conditional use permit for the property at 500 West Opus. That said, Alderman Guzikowski, I think you're going to kick off the conversation.
All right. Well, as, as it's been stated, you know, back on the, in January, and when the, when the plan commission talked about this, I'm sorry, that was February, plan commission talked about this, and in January, it came to common council, at both those votes, I was opposed to it. And when we were at plan commission again last week, I was opposed to it. There are still many reasons why I'm against it, and I'll preface everything else again by reiterating, you know, FedEx is a great company, and I agree with everyone here, it's just not the right location. Now, that being said, what do you do about this? There's a ton of conditions and restrictions. The unfortunate part, and I wish, and my first question would be for, I don't know if it's Catherine or Doug...
that notice was greatly increased by Alderman Gale, and I think we sent out to everyone within Fairfield at his request, and that was prior to the public hearing.
Oh, Doug, I still, we had the, it was 600.
Oh, Glenn, I'm sorry, I corrected. The southern portion of Fairfield, yes.
Okay. Comments from the audience, please hold. Chris?
So getting back to that, so at the last week's plan commission, I was still opposed to it. There's a number of reasons why, and that I wanted to kind of bring up here today. If we look at our conditions and restrictions on H, when we talk about the money and who's paying for the intersections, I think that we need to throw in some type of verbiage that also includes any upgrades to Howell and Oakwood when, when that intersection is going to, is going to, when it's shot, because even though they've done a traffic analysis, we've been told that this area is suitable for this type of traffic. I'm not the guy in that job, but I'm, I'm just a regular guy. I just, I find it hard to believe right now. So with all due respect to Commissioner Johnson, I, I think that this is going to be, just become a bigger headache down the road. So number one, I think there should be some consideration in here for some monies for that intersection. When we move on to our condition and restrictions for L, traffic going west on Oakwood Road, there's, to me, I don't think there should be, we should remove, if until such time as posted traffic signs and regulations, regulations are altered, I don't think we should have any, any traffic going westbound on Oakwood Road if, if this continues through. I mean, at least, at the very least, you know, these neighbors don't have to worry about that driving through their front yard. Well, eastbound, you got to get, you got to at least get Howell Avenue.
Ma'am, we're not taking shouting comments from the audience.
But the path would be going out of Opus to east to Howell Avenue. But that then brings Howell Avenue to Shepherd Hills, and once you get to Howell Avenue, then you have everybody on Ryan Road that you have to deal with. And then you think it's a mess right now, wait till the interstate is worked, worked on, and that whole interchange is pulled apart. We have a headache now, it's going to really increase down the road. So those are my two concerns that I think I would ask that the other aldermen consider and discussing and looking at, or from my perspective.
Thank you, Alderman Gusekowski. Alderman Bukiewicz?
I'm going to comment just briefly. I mean, we had an extensive discussion last Tuesday at, at planning, and many of the residents were here. Appreciate your input, and believe me, this would be so much easier if they did pick another location, but as Alderman Gusekowski said, they are where they are, and they are allowed to be where they are. It is zoned M1. Now, somebody brought up, we have too much zoning. That's really an issue and a decision for our plan, our planning department and our master plan that decides that. This was decided long before that this area was M1. So they came in, they were allowed with a conditional use permit to get in, as by our ordinance, and they were granted that right to come in. I stated this before, in a typical M1, there are conditions and restrictions that apply. In this case, with a conditional use permit, we could go beyond that and implore even more restrictions, which I think our planning department did a dynamite job on doing. Now, you may disagree with us, but you weren't in the meetings, nor were I in all the meetings, but I can tell you that when the applicant came and wanted certain things, our planning department turned them away, and they did not get everything they wanted. They were held to standards beyond of what, what other business, similar type businesses are in the city. We're trying to protect the residents as best we can, and we realize in your eyes, we're not standing up to what you want it to be. But we are trying to do the best we can with the parameters we're given to operate within the ordinances and the conditional restrictions. The applicant, again, complied to some of them, or what we asked and implored. That was evident by the extra 1.5 million dollars in costs. The idling times cut down to five minutes, the decibels were being monitored. Now, it was talked about, where's the measurement coming from? Measurement's actually coming from the residents. If complaints come in, it's up to the city of Oak Creek, the police set, as well as the traffic on Oakwood Road. Okay, please, I do have a floor at this time. So as well as that traffic on Oakwood Road going westbound, okay? FedEx does not hire independent drivers. I think this is a fact that, that should be brought up. Everybody is a FedEx employee, driving FedEx vehicles. They have GPS on them. If that truck goes westbound on Oakwood, they can be, they can be tracked, the vehicle can be tracked, the driver can be disciplined, can lose his job. It's really not worth the risk that an independent driver or trucker would take trying to get that load in and out. So although this doesn't appear everything you want it to be, I think our staff did a very commendable job to try to make this fit in, in the given circumstances they had. Like I said, our city is zoned in certain areas to accommodate not only businesses, but residents and commercial. It's laid out by people that have studied urban planning, and it, it fits our need. It was zoned this way for a long, long time. Now, as far as alternate locations, again, this process would be way easier if it did wind up somewhere else, but the fact of the matter is, it isn't, and we're here now. Again, Opus has had this property for a long time and marketed it. Their original plan must have not worked because they changed, they changed gears at what they were going to do. And they found somebody that, that has a desire for the property, and that's the business deal they cut. Now, for them, it's easy to say, oh, let's take them here, let's take them there. We don't have control of that property, nor do we have that decision between two business partners. Keep in mind, FedEx solicited us. We did not go out to solicit specifically FedEx for that property. So again, it's very difficult. It's a process. I applaud you for taking part in it. I'm glad to see turnouts like this, and again, it would be great if we were all on the same page, but unfortunately, we do, we do differ here. I, for one, have not really put a lot of merit into the jobs. There's been a lot of talk about jobs, and not put a lot of emphasis into that, nor the tax base. I really base that on what's allowable by our ordinances and what my duty is to do with those ordinances. As far as impactful, and, and it was brought up by a resident, some of the foremen that supported this don't drive that way. We, we do get around the city. We may not drive there daily, but I think we're all pretty familiar with it. I can tell you, I live in the second district just up the road. About six years ago, we put in an on-off ramp on Drexel Avenue. It greatly impacted the second district, probably harder than any district's been impacted with traffic in the city of Oak Creek probably the last 10 years. And it's evident if you've been down Drexel Avenue, the amount of truck traffic. I can tell you, every single truck that has to exit Oak Creek to get into North Branch Industrial Park, and that is heading north, now exits, exits at Drexel, they no longer get off at Ryan, they no longer get off at Rossin. That traffic has affected an entire subdivision just to the west of us. So we understand that, and again, we've learned our lessons from that, and you can see it, and I, and I'll applaud Alderman Gale for this, because he was a champion, to get that extra stoplight. We're dealing with a stoplight situation on 10th just due to that traffic. So again, traffic, traffic is always going to be a burden in some way, shape, or form whenever you're experiencing growth. We try to do it controlled, we try to do it smartly and learn from, from some of our past mistakes, and I think, I think we're trying to do as best we can on what we have here, so I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, Dan. Alderman Gusekowski?
I too want to thank everyone. I want to just say that it's, this is the type of night where you really have to put aside personal feelings and try and make a decision that's the best for not just the first district, but for the city as, as a whole. And there were, I received five emails. I only responded to one because I got it at, I read it just as the, the meeting started. But I printed out the other four, I have them here, and I highlighted some, some statements that were made, and fellow aldermen, I, I may take a little bit more time than I normally do, but I don't want to come off as being condescending, insulting, argumentative, or anything like that. I want to share my opinions based on the comments that were made in the emails, and I think some of them are, are important, but deserve some sort of response from me. As it's already been said, this is zone M1 manufacturing, and I know we've had a lot of what-ifs, so to say, with what might happen if FedEx goes in. Now, we could have also be having this discussion at a metal stamping plant, then proposed for this property. And if I was to extrapolate what would happen with a metal stamping plant, I, I think it's a rather loud operation. I think comparing it to a, whether it be FedEx, UPS, Yellow Freight, you would have general truckers that would come in from various companies, that would come into the metal stamping plant, pick up a load or deliver something not familiar with the area, and then when they leave, they would go to the right because they think it's easier, or go down the Howell and turn right and head down into Caledonia, because as it's already been stated, they're not FedEx drivers, and the drivers are going to be pretty well-regulated as to which way they're going to go. Alderman Bukiewicz pointed out, Drexel Avenue interchange impacted the first district quite a bit also because there's a, you know, a business, a business park on the north side of Drexel at 10th, and all these trucks were coming off of Drexel Avenue, and they're all heading up 10th. Now, that is the reason why there's going to be, you know, potential traffic light at 10th. But the impact of that interchange decreased the traffic flow so much on 13th that the plans for 13th have been changed, because the traffic is, that was coming down 13th from Rossin or up from Pute's, you know, to get to the various interchanges are now just coming off of Drexel and going straight or wherever. And we did have some truck traffic issues on Drexel Avenue east of Howell, because it just said weight limit was five tons or three tons, whatever it said. The new sign was put up that said no truck traffic, you know, the truck with the red, you know, circle in line. And the police is out there trying to do the best to try and enforce that, the new signage. And that has decreased quite a bit, because I haven't gotten any calls, no complaints, since that new signage was put up. So there was, we did create a problem, but we did solve the problem. So as I go on here, I just want, I did receive, like I said, these emails, and one of the comments was, "You should do your homework to see if this is a good fit." Well, I think I did a reasonable amount of good homework with regards to this. The one, one person said they sat by the FedEx terminal in Franklin and listened to the incredible noise from the semis being loaded and unloaded. Today, I was there again. I had been there before, I was there again today, and, and there's three truck terminals at that location. There's Conway, there's, was it IPOX or something? And then there's the FedEx terminal. I was downwind of the heavy wind that we had today, and I watched that, that tugger truck, whatever you, pusher truck that just moves stuff along the property. It backed up. I did not hear the backup alarm. I was probably 300 feet away, downwind, so I would have heard that. I, I didn't hear it. The person goes on, "The weight limit's on seven mile road and seven and a half mile road, so I doubt they would travel that way." That leaves Oakwood Road possibly available since you put in an added sentence in the proposal. We've already discussed that to death. The trucks aren't going to go west on Oakwood coming out of Opus, nor are they going to go south on State Highway 38 towards Caledonia. Another individual talked about the wear and tear on the roadways and who's going to pay to fix it. Obviously, State Highway 38 is a state highway, so it wouldn't directly be the city of Oak Creek, but that would be a state issue. Talked about widening Howell to four lanes, you'd be farther south. We already talked about that. Nobody's going to be going south. They're not supposed to be going south. And to accommodate employees traveling from the Racine area. I, well, we already talked about the fact that there's not going to be a large, large amount of new jobs coming into Oak Creek. A lot of it's going to be just transfers. I can't predict where those people live. They could live on the north side of Milwaukee for all we know. So I think the argument with, with increased traffic coming up from Racine just for FedEx isn't a good one. I, the comment here, "I was warned by firefighters in the community that if there's ever a fire at PPG Plant, to evacuate the area immediately since the chemicals they use are noxious." Good. I'm not being condescending, but I, I think you should go if something happens at PPG just because of what they do there. But again, it has nothing to do with the FedEx terminal. It talked about the pollution from the Oak Creek Power Plant. Well, I went to the We Energy site, and as far as the pollution is concerned, 99% of the fly ash is removed by electrostatic precipitators, bottom ash is removed by hydraulic removal system. Advancements in coal combustion technology and environmental controls will result in a clean, efficient, and reliable facility by 2013, which is now a few years ago. Oak Creek emissions will be reduced from 2,000 levels by approximately 60%. It's one of the cleanest coal-burning plants in, in the system. Another person wrote, "Increased freight tandem trucks moving on the same highways with school buses." We already have that. I understand the increase might, might be a problem to some, but the school buses, they run in the morning, they run in the afternoon, and yes, we're going to have truck traffic generally busier time during the day. But whether they're truckers from FedEx, or UPS, or any other person, I, I think they're smart enough to know that, how to deal with school buses, and I know the school bus drivers are probably smart enough to deal with the truckers. And the last one, I will acknowledge, Megan, I did get your email, although you sent it to Mark, and then you CC'd the rest of the council members. The biggest thing with this email is that I, I really didn't appreciate the comment, "Let me speak in a language that you greedy folks understand." Now, you got to understand that I'm sitting here listening to everything that you say, whether, and, and it's a very personal reason why you're here tonight, and I, and I acknowledge that. But in my district, I have probably, I have at least five trucking companies in my district, three terminals. I got Yellow Freight, I got UPS, and I've got, what's the third? AIM. AIM Trucking is down there, and there's a couple smaller ones down on 10th Street. The issues that you say there might be with the, the exhaust from the trucks and, and the like, I have the same distance in relationship to some of the outerlying residences. I, I live in the neighborhood of these truck terminals, and I don't smell a thing. I live in the flight path of the airport. I bought a house knowing the airport was there, and that planes would fly over my house, and the only, the only annoying thing is that some of the air, airlines are still flying older planes, but the new ones sound like overwhelmed rubber bands, and on some d- And on some days where the ceiling is low and there's no wind, I can smell the airport. But since I've lived in that neighborhood, because of the airport and because of the increased flights and because of everything else that's being generated by the airport, my property values have only gone down because of the real estate market. They have bounced back. I've never had a problem with the real estate, with the value of my house because of the airport. And people are selling houses and people are buying houses adjacent to the airport. I obviously don't represent people in the, in the fifth and sixth district down in that area, but I do represent people in the first district and the citizens as a whole. And I have spoke, like I normally do, when there are, are almost every issue that comes that, that has a vote. I, I talk to people that are in the city, whether they live in my district or outside of my district. And I've talked to people who understand that this is not going to be in their backyard. And I, and I understand that. I had, I had the same issue with an apartment development in my district and the same group of people on Pennsylvania Avenue didn't want it. But I had to look at what's best for the overall city in general. And I talked to an individual today who happens to be a Franklin business owner who is the process of relocating into Oak Creek. And somebody made a comment about FedEx being kicked out of Franklin. Well, they're not being kicked out of Franklin. Terminal that they have on 27th, they inherited. It's inadequate, it's too small, they need to expand, they want to come to Oak Creek. Well, this business owner said, you know, Franklin has a 80/20 ratio. They have 80% residential, 20% business. And you know what? It just doesn't work over there. Want to come to Oak Creek because, businesses want to come to Oak Creek because Oak Creek is trying to, is working with businesses and working with the community and trying to do the best for everybody involved. I understand that the residents don't like this, but I also ask you, it's, and this was a comment from this, this person. He said, it's been vacant for 15 years. It's, it was supposed to be a business park. The business parks we have aren't full. So why would somebody want to build a business park and not fill it up with businesses? It's been there for 15 years. The residents should have known over those 15 years that something was going to be built there. And this is what we have presented to us that's going to occupy that land. It's not going to make everybody happy, I understand that. The last thing is just west of there is train, it's train noise. I haven't heard anybody talk about the train, the Amtrak trains or anything that runs, runs adjacent to your property. It's probably a mood issue, but then it's, it's about as unimportant as the coal power plant that's many miles away. I don't know if that's a good, good connection, but I'm trying to say is the, the train, nobody talked about the train, but they're all talking about just this one, one development. You know, I get, I get complaints about the whistle over there by Aben Shyne and they're coming through. And Union Pacific says, we're not doing anything wrong, but the neighbors complain. And that's all I can do. Anyways, I think, I think I'm going to close my comments by saying, it's a tough vote, but I'm in support of it.
Steve, Mike Alderman-Toman?
Contrary to what some of the people think tonight, that this is a cut and dry deal before we listen to you, that's wrong. And I can speak personally to that because I appreciate everybody that showed up tonight and spoke to this issue. I, I realize there's a lot of angst out there. There's issues that we're faced with. I, being the alderman in the fourth district, I was faced with probably the biggest issue in this city when that coal power plant decided to expand. And that, that was a huge fight. I fought that battle. It's been a while, and that coal plant has proven to be a big asset to the city of Oak Creek. Personally, I can, you know, when I listen to the comments of the public, a couple of things stood out for me. I'd like to maybe ask the fire chief or the police chief to address this one issue about the intersections that came up. That is a huge concern when you have all this truck traffic, you have an emergency. My understanding is, are many of these intersections in Oak Creek are controlled by, by our protective services, correct? If there is an emergency, you can control those intersections when you approach them, correct?
There, there's three parts to the intersections. One is the local control, the county intersections, and the state. All three, about 95% of our city that has traffic lights have the optocom, which gives us the right of way under emergency conditions to pass through and change the lights.
Stop all traffic, and that includes the intersection of Oakwood and Howell, correct?
Right, yeah, that was a state project.
All right, okay. That answers that question. The other one is, thanks, Tom, the air quality issue that was brought up tonight. Maybe, I don't know who can answer this, maybe, maybe Mike Simmons can answer this. Do we subject any of our truck terminals to air quality standards? Do we monitor air anywhere when it comes to truck terminals?
As far as engineering is aware, the answer to that is no.
That's what I thought the answer was. So to single out one development like this FedEx terminal would be, in my opinion, punitive. Would that be pretty accurate?
No, I, I guess I would say that, and you're well aware of this, Alderman-Toman, when, when the plant expansion happened, there were requirements for the air monitoring stations in, in various locations, strategic locations adjacent to the development. And, and they were obligated to do the ongoing...
Coal fire, the coal fire plant.
Yes, right, yes.
I was involved in that.
I, I, I wouldn't say that this is, is punitive. This is a, you know, a large development and these conditions and restrictions were developed somewhat in consultation with, with the developer. Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as I know, they are not opposed to this requirement?
To be clear, I mean, there, there is no requirement for air monitoring. There is a, a threshold and standard that echoes that, which is in the current code, which is applicable to any business in the city of Oak Creek. The more specific conditions and restrictions, such as the one that was recommended or espoused by Mr. Buffington at the plan commission meeting, are not part of this conditional use document.
My question was, was basically directed at, in comparison to the other truck terminals that exist, they have no air quality monitoring.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman-Gale? If I may, I, can I provide information in response to what Alderman-Toman?
Sure.
I, I didn't read this earlier, but this came from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources with regards to emissions. And you're right about the, all the other truck terminals, but it says, under the Clean, Clean Air Act, EPA sets stringent standards for diesel fuels and new diesel engines, including heavy duty trucks, buses, and non-road equipment. In 2006, ultra-low sulfur diesel became available on the on-highway fleet. FedEx has clean idle trucks. Not all of them, I noticed today, but, but they have to meet certain standards with regards to meeting clean idle trucks. It says, diesel engines have a very long life cycle, often in excess of 30 years, while the EPA rules impact new engines and fuel. The challenge remains to address the over 10 million existing unregulated and older diesel engines commonly referred to as the legacy fleet as expeditiously impractical as possible. To accelerate public health benefits, EPA created a national clean diesel program, of which Region Five, which is Wisconsin, leads the Midwest Clean Diesel Initiative, a public-private partnership to voluntarily reduce diesel emissions prior to or in addition to mandatory deadlines. So while voluntary, there is programs in place to help reduce that, that issue.
Alderman-Vahill?
All right. I guess I get to wrap things up here before we move on.
I get to speak.
Oh, I guess.
Just not a pretty face.
I thought, I thought, I thought you were done after you let everyone take off. But at any rate, first of all, I'd like to make kind of a blanket statement that really doesn't apply to this particular development. And the blanket statement is opposition. And when the Drexel interchange, right where we're sitting, this area is directly affected by that interchange. When that interchange was put in here six or seven years ago, very controversial. People that lived up and down Drexel Avenue here, especially on the western side over here on 20th Street, were vehemently against it. But it's all Drexel Town Square Development and everything that's in it, along with the new city hall, wouldn't be, if it wouldn't be for that, that interchange. There's other places in Oak Creek where, and I've sat on a council, not only for this term, but a few years ago as well, and, and no matter where we go with development or new things, there's always people in the near proximity that don't like it for whatever reason. So to say that, you know, why don't we put FedEx over on 13th and Ryan Road? If you look down the street, quarter of a mile, there's two subdivisions right there, as well as another subdivision to the north, about a half of a mile. So, I mean, there's probably three or four other places where this particular operation would fit with the amount of land that they require. And every one of them has residential neighborhoods or, or maybe schools or something else in close proximity. So not that it's something that probably couldn't be done, but if we move it, we're going to get the same thing, opposition, opposition, opposition. And I'd just like everybody to know, and I think from all the statements that were made by so many aldermen here, I think we take this stuff real seriously and, and everybody up here does their homework. We have a good staff here that gives us a lot of background information on things, good plan commission, that's a, from a wide spectrum of different people, different backgrounds and different employment, things that they do in their regular jobs. And plan commission people literally volunteer their time. They don't really garner any amount of large paychecks or anything out of this. And certainly the aldermen don't garner large paychecks out of the city of Oak Creek as well. But I guess when you look at Oak Creek, it's been said numerous times by past mayors and past aldermen and, and people that we're in to know here, that Oak Creek is kind of unique because we're kind of a gateway city into Milwaukee County. We have three railroads that come through here, a freeway that comes through here, two or three major arterial state highways that run through Oak Creek. And our development people, our planning department, and Doug was part of that from early on, he's been here for a long time, put a lot of our zonings in place to accommodate different businesses based on the best location for them in the city. Because of that, most of the industrial sites are, are put on arterial highways such as Highway 38, maybe 27th Street, Rossin Avenue, because they were best suited to take the traffic, best suited to accommodate big buildings, trucks, anything else that comes with commercial entities. And because of that, Oak Creek has a lot of diversity. We, we're, we're a city that has two or three different industrial areas. We have a couple different retail areas. We have a lot of scattered residential areas, but it's a good mix of things. And it's going to continue that way. And as cities grow, the people that are in any particular place are reluctant to see change, whether they perceive it as bad or good. Myself, I've lived in Oak Creek my whole life. My family has been in Oak Creek for multiple generations. So we've seen it go from, you know, dirt roads here and, and two lane roads, where maybe one or two two lane roads, no pavement, to what it is today. And, and no matter what, I mean, the people that were farming here in a farming community, they resisted the first subdivisions. The people that were here a little later, they opposed the expansion to the airport. So the people that were in office then and the people that are in office now, we look at a lot of different things. We try to make the best decisions at what's in front of us, with what's in front of us. And, you know, just, we're not here to, to, to be condescending, as Alderman Kokowski said. We take everything very seriously. We look at all of the things. We see what is going to maybe benefit the city in the long run. Now, this gets down to FedEx in particular. With any, and the reason I said this on the news the other night, that it's going to bring jobs to Oak Creek, it's not referring just to FedEx. Because FedEx is one integral part of any system. You have manufacturing, moving of goods, somebody's got to do that, whether it goes by rail, whether it goes by ship, whether it goes by air, whether it goes by truck. So not only is FedEx, I think, poised to take advantage of the area that they're going to be in hopefully if this passes, but it's going to spur other developments around here, but it's because it's in close proximity to a company like FedEx that can take their manufactured goods, order small packages, or whatever it may be, and it's going to be handy for people to do it. So it's going to bring other businesses here, it's going to expand our tax base in other ways besides just the FedEx building itself. Not only that, if we do get more development right across the street in our Oak Creek Business Park, there's going to be a lot of people working in there, they're going to patronize our restaurants, stores, everything else that is here. And any city cannot grow without people spending money in it. And you can't sustain even an area like Drexel Town Square here with people that are making minimum wage because they can't patronize the shops and stores that are here. But, you know, I, I think this thing in the long, long run is going to be a, a good fit for the city. As Alderman Kokowski stated, there's other areas here that have truck terminals and whatnot around them. And I don't believe the police department or our inspecting, or inspection, or zoning enforcement people are inundated with calls from any of those facilities. They seem to be good neighbors. And I would expect that FedEx is going to be an astounding neighbor because they are a big company, they've got a good reputation to uphold, and I think they're, they're willing to do whatever it takes here to not only make the city proud of them being here, but I think the neighbors are going to be really surprised to see what kind of a facility they put in and what kind of neighbors they're going to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman-Vahill.
I guess I'm, Andrew, have anything to add in the mix of things? Great, thank you. Last in the mix here, and I, I've read out, I've, I've opposed this, this proposal basically because I believe it's wrong project for the wrong site and the wrong part of the community from the get-go. But the item on the agenda tonight is for specifically for conditions, restrictions, because we technically passed the M1 zoning and approve of the project. But I believe, unfortunately though, given all the time we spent on formulating what has been likened to an extensive list of conditions and restrictions, and Brian mentioned in the planning commission, you know, just extraordinary number of additions to that typical list, we still haven't addressed. And that, in that whole list of items, specifically the, the major ones that have been brought up as focus of concern for the community, the fact that noise ordinance on, in, in our municipal code actually precludes us from doing anything about the fact of a noise in the trucks because it's a moving object, well, that's the very fact, that's the very existence of this business. The fact that you can't regulate it, you know, is, is unbelievable. There's, there's no one any purpose, the fact that you cannot have any control of the fact that, you know, these things that, you know, 62 decibels is a, is the allowable standard for, for noise on a, on a project at the, at the property line, it's conversational tone. You know, these trucks at, at any intersection, any stop sign, obviously are going to widely exceed that, that and the fact that you, you can't regulate them by a, a condition or restriction because of our ordinance is, you know, is somewhat arbitrary and, and needs to be accounted for in some other form or fashion. If this gets through this level of thing, this actually somehow needs to be addressed in the, in the development agreement, that somehow there's got to have to be some control and some monitoring of that particular facet of the development. The traffic, folks have mentioned significantly, especially the time of day in terms of the traffic, obviously, given the, the peak times for coming and going in terms of deliveries here, that coincides with significant peak in, in volume from commuting as well as the school bus traffic on Howell Avenue and the Ryan Road corridor. So that is, that is a fact of life and the fact that potential miscalculations in, in the, in the TA, the traffic impact analysis that was done, if in fact you are slightly off in terms of the impact, is... if in fact you are slightly off in terms of the impact that is prognosticated in that document, there are significant costs that are going to be borne to fix those down the road, which are not identified and which are, given the fact that this thing will likely, because of the way TIFs come off and they're edited, the general fund, will not allow a whole lot of incremental tax to address those down the road. That is another facet of this that needs to be strongly addressed before we can move forward actually, you know, either through this document or through the development agreement. There's an item in the Planning Commission, minutes and back, way back in November, Wally Dickman brought up the fact that the impact on the Ryan Road Bridge, significant recommendation in the client's own TIA, a 440-foot approach ramp to the Southbound Turn lane on the bridge, is cited in there as a potential necessity to deal with the increased traffic that buildups of these facilities. Unlike the state knows of that nor have the, apparently may not have taken that into account in their design of that interchange, which is a obviously significant point of concern that needs to be addressed at some point in this process. And it has not been done as yet. Mr. Buffington and others spoke extensively about the environmental issues. You know, you're talking significant number of homes in the downwind side of this particular project. There is a lot of monetary value stuck in the tax base in those, in the surrounding areas along Oakwood and English Air. Think hard about the impact here. You have 48 acres of land, basically, given the fact that these things, these trucking terminals, they may cost a fortune to build, Brian, I give you that. They do not hold their value from a taxable tax base standpoint. Marty will tell you that $12 million cited in here in terms of its buildout potential value is an aggressive figure. Assessors have to judge these projects based on a very strict code of assessment protocols and practices. I have talked about this in the past, that these projects, much larger, much more extensive, worth significantly less than that in just the general area here. You know, they just do not throw off a lot of taxes. They do not hold their monetary value over time, unfortunately. That is just a fact of life. So those are significant items of concern for me. You know, the irony here is, you know, this facility is relocating from Franklin. Sits in an area they're reconsidering for a business park of their own, or specifically going to preclude trucking terminals because of their low taxable value as a specific use in that taxing district. So I just find it troubling that we're here with open arms. I'll leave it at that for now. All right, any other comments, questions, council? Chris, sorry.
Can we go back before you make any type of motions and discuss the traffic on Oakwood Road and how to address that from going west?
Sure, we can, council is, I think, full rate, Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, to add something to this, the CNRs here. There was one thing, Brian, that I remembered that I need to clarify with you two before we proceed. So Doug, I don't know if you want to deal with Chris's point there.
I guess specifically, Alderman Gusekowski, I mean, there is a prohibition against traffic going west, truck traffic going west on Oakwood Road.
I think he's talking about the eventual, that the phraseology about...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it says that if and until such time posted traffic signs and regulations are altered, I would say no westbound traffic on Oakwood Road.
I think that would be the discretion of the council. Just to paraphrase the rationale why that was introduced as amended language, is that in the event that, for instance, those properties do turn over into an industrial use, at that point in time, there may not be a need, as determined by the common council, to have the restriction on Oakwood Road. But that's certainly discretion of the council.
Yeah, I think Doug...
That's easy enough to change down the road.
Yeah, I think it's easy enough to change down the road. And there is no plans for anything remotely looking like that at the current time. Mike?
We already have that discretion, don't we? I mean, if that gets changed in the future, that has to come to the council, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Well, but take, wait, we should just take it out of here altogether.
It can't be changed unless council changes it, the way it reads, if I'm correct.
You're correct.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
Well, just the money for the intersection of Howell and Oakwood, when it has to be redone at some point due to the traffic.
Chris, I think Doug can speak to that, because Doug actually has testimony in the November Planning Commission document as well, that those costs will be borne by the applicant developer.
The, if I may...
And remove, though.
The TIA did not indicate any intersection improvements to Howell and Oakwood, only to Oakwood and Opus Drive. That's why that was stricken from the condition.
But follow up on that, Doug, then. How do we intend to deal with unforeseen traffic impact? Where, you know, Whis Park has spent a million to improve these intersections at the, their, study of their potential traffic impact, given the full buildout of their property. How do we, how do we wrap arms around that?
Well, I mean, it's, to introduce a hypothetical situation, I guess the council has its full range of options on how to fund any capital improvement, and if that includes a share of funding with the state, they could fund it out of any number of ways, one of which would be general funds, certainly CIP. The other, they do have tools available via assessment powers. So, I mean, it's hard for me to look at a hypothetical and give you what your range of options are. But it's no different from any other roadway project, or in this case, shared project with the state, because that's what it would be in the event that this council and the Wisconsin Department of Transportation determine that the actual traffic at intersection was of such magnitude that it warranted additional intersection improvements.
What about a $250,000 traffic escrow for that intersection?
Yeah.
Just hypothetically.
And hypothetically, the council, as part of a conditional use permit, has the ability to introduce reasonable conditions into the process. And from a standpoint, and I will just kind of share a bit of historical perspective on that, we actually have done that on several occasions with respect to subdivision roads. And in fact, I think we've actually done that, I don't know if saying, do we do that with Opus? They have posted escrows. What we have found is that in many cases, when the bill comes due, those escrows are not sufficient to capitalize those improvements. And that puts the city in a bind in order to how to, I mean, at that point, you lose some flexibility and options as to how to pay for that improvement.
I'd charge you then, Doug, if these conditions are, and restrictions are approved as they are, we need to significantly address that particular point in the development agreement with the applicant, that that cost, the potential cost, the taxpayer of this community needs to be addressed in a definitive way in any agreement we strike for a final document here.
If that is the will of the council, I mean, you're certainly able to modify the conditions and restrictions, which were recommended to you by the Plan Commission.
Alderman Gale?
Yes.
At the last council meeting when we sent this back to Plan Commission, notwithstanding everything I've already said, I did mention that, I did express some concern with the current layout of the intersection at Oakwood and Howell. And FedEx, you know, driving these tandem trailers, I said that it's got quite the left turn they have to make. And I went and looked at it again today, and I thought, well, maybe when you make a left turn from Oakwood onto northbound Howell, you're going to have two lanes to make that wide sweeping turn. Well, as I looked at it again today, you really only have one lane and then a little bit of shoulder area. So I hate to predict anything, but I don't think it's going to... They're going to be professional truck drivers, but I just think that the way that left turn, going southbound Howell to eastbound Oakwood, and the way it juts out closer to the intersection than any other intersections I've seen in this city, I think it won't be long before a truck takes down the light signal, the traffic signal at that intersection. I just, and it's because of the way it's designed. It has nothing to do with FedEx or, you know, any other. It's just, it's just now you're driving tandem trucks through there. And I just think that if that becomes a problem, then we may have to address who's going to pay for, for the repairs.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
I guess just, my comment goes to the traffic as well. I mean, as was mentioned, Whis Park paid for some of the upgrades on that intersection already, based on some of their projections. But they have no control literally over how many trucks or how many cars are going to come out and in and out of their development. It's just an educated guess. Because if somebody comes in there and requests a building that has, say, 85 truck docks, and you've got another entity down the road a little ways that's got 50 more, and another one around the corner that's got 65 more, plus all the employees that would come out of in Oakview Business Park, you know, there's impacts that were probably unforeseen, depending on what comes in there for development. And as far as even the turn lanes in Oakwood Road, they may not be set up 100% to suit traffic like that, but I'm sure it was thought of in the design. And no matter if it's FedEx, or if it's 100 trucks possibly coming from across the street in Oakview Business Park someday, they're all going to have to navigate that intersection, everybody. So it's not, not to say that, it could happen. You know, maybe in the wintertime when there are slippery conditions, somebody misjudges the turn or something. Sure, you could knock down a sign, but that happens all over in Oak Creek already with pedestrians and whatnot trying to get away from cars that are making corners, or somebody that pulls out in front of somebody too fast. It's inevitable at any intersection, so.
Eastbound, um...
Yeah, I know, I know what you're talking about.
Eastbound Oakwood at Howell?
Northbound Howell, yep.
That's one lane?
Yep. Well, it's two, it's two lanes there, but as was...
Turning lanes?
Yeah.
One turning lane?
Right.
One left-hand turn.
One, right, one turning lane, which is...
On Oakwood Road, there's one.
Right, so what's that, right, what's that going to do for the residents that are trying to go east?
As I just stated, though, there's no guarantee that the amount of truck docks at FedEx and the amount of traffic that they know they're going to have coming out of there, because their trucks are all on schedules, they're all on routes. They know what's coming in, what's going out on any given day. Now, if you have, when Oakview Business Park gets developed 100%, I don't know how many lots are in there, Doug, probably eight, eight to 10. That means, on an average, you could have a spec building that's being built there right now. I think it's got 30 dock slots and it may be more, 40. And, you know, if you add seven or eight more, then it got 20, or 15, or 40. You know, that traffic's going to multiply as well. And the people in that neighborhood are going to have to put up with huge amounts of truck traffic, whether FedEx is there or not.
I'm just saying, we're going to have to accommodate at some point the growth and the changes that are happening at this intersection and be able to address it with improvements.
That goes to my comment, that goes to my comment back with our city planning department and everybody else. You know, they put these areas in parts of the city that are most conducive to handling that type of traffic, commercial traffic. They put them on the main arteries of Oak Creek, where you have state roads, federal highways in some cases, that are equipped and built to take that type of traffic. And I grant you the fact that they come out of neighborhoods like yours, but it's pretty hard to have direct access for every industrial or commercial development directly onto an arterial highway. It doesn't have, very seldom, very seldom. So inevitably, where these areas are, it's going to impact neighborhoods just by the fact that they have to get out to the arterial highway using a secondary road in our city. So that happens in more than one place in our city already. I mean, there's numerous places that truck traffic is integrated with residential traffic and even school traffic before they can get out to our arterial roads and go to the freeway.
Anybody else think to add? Brian, the one thing I did, I did think about is looking at the one map that you did show. And Doug and me maybe, if that was negotiated, Brian, you just reflected that the bike easement, I believe, should follow maybe the dotted line that's along the eastern side of the wetland in that northwest corner, rather than along the river right away.
I believe our, and Michael pull that up, the map nine, if I'm remembering correctly, in the City of Oak Creek 2013 bicycle multimoto plan is what that map follows. And, so I don't even know if we have map nine to pull up from the city, but I do have it with me, and I'd be happy to pass it over to Doug so he can confirm, but...
Yeah, if you, I think it was maybe one slide before this, Brian.
Sure.
Yeah, that's the slide. I think that dash line in the northwest corner is actually the projected county bike path route. Oh, that's what you have there, okay. But I believe, from what I recall, that...
I think what Doug will report when he looks at that map is, number one, it's a conceptual bike pad future map. This pathway doesn't exist. And what the city is going to have to do is coordinate potentially with future development, put this type of requirement in all future approvals, so you can connect this, so it's not a path to nowhere.
You know, this is a negotiable somewhat.
Well, it is, but I think what Doug might point out is that map is envisioned so that when the property to the north of us develops, the path also stays along that western area so that there's not a path running through the middle of that site, just like we can't have a path running through the middle of our site either. So my understanding is, following that map nine, which is the 2013 plan by the city, that it would be along the railroad tracks, that's probably where there is room. And then we're being asked to then landscape to the east of that, and then we can put our fence.
As is the case, when you do a system-wide plan, it is not informed to the level of detail that you are. For instance, if you're doing a site plan or a detailed design on a trail segment. In this case, the citywide bikeway system shows connecting trails along certain things which are conducive to those, such as railroad rights of way, such as environmental corridors. So to the extent that that was informed by the folks who did that, the bikeway plan and the park and open space plan, they envisioned that as following that railroad corridor. Now, to the extent that there are wetland impacts, you know, those are things that would have to be detailed, dealt with in the design phase.
All right, thank you. So Doug, is, are we... Potential financial impacts of future unexpected road improvements, maintenance... If not in, in trend in this document, will need to be dealt with in the development agreement?
To the extent that this document sets the framework for future actions by this council and this Plan Commission, if that is something that this council feels is appropriate to include as part of these conditions and restrictions, I am of the belief that it should be in these conditions and restrictions.
Any thoughts on that from, Chris, I think, if you're, thought on that, Mike, or Mark, or Dan? Any thought on the...
I've got a comment.
Okay, Mike.
How, how does that play out in reality? You've got, we're talking about the intersection itself, basically. It sounds like that's the issue. Okay, you've got, you've got a state highway. Any improvements to that state highway in conjunction with Oakwood is going to have to be a state and a city issue. How do you, how do you do that in this, in this document? I don't quite understand how you'd get there.
I will, let, I don't, Mike, you want to just briefly explain the process of how state highways get reconstructed or redeveloped? But to my knowledge, we cannot unilaterally make improvements to a state highway.
Right, exactly.
But in terms of who's paying for them is a significant concern. If the actual improvement is driven by...
So you intend to pre-negotiate a future...
We already did.
Intersection with the state? I just don't see...
Jerry Frankie had an intersection of Rain and Howell and Rain and Oakwood to put the Oakview Business Park in. That had to get done.
Because he put up the money.
Well, yeah, someone had to. They forced him to. There was a traffic impact analysis done for that project, and that was part of the outcome of that. All right, Mike.
Yeah, maybe I could just weigh in a little bit on this. That intersection was just very recently improved, and that was done in conjunction with the Oakview Business Park and the state's improvements project for that, for that whole stretch. And that was, that design came from the traffic impact analysis that was required of Oakview Business Park. And that took into consideration all of the development in that area, including what was the remainder of Opus. But in that short timeframe from that traffic impact analysis to what's potentially happening here is, it's different, you know, so the traffic is, there is the potential that there's some shortcomings. However, that's why there was a traffic impact analysis required for this development. And at this point, that's the best information that we have and projection for what's needed to accommodate that traffic and in conjunction with everything that's coming from Oakview. And the conclusion was is that we will need improvements to the intersection of Oakwood and Opus Drive, traffic signals and whatever else on the periphery. But nothing was recommended for the intersection of Howell and Oakwood. So again, that's, that's the best information that we have and the best projections that we have. And like Doug said, we are introducing hypotheticals. You know, we're assuming that there's going to be issues. That's not to say that, that there won't. So, but there is policy procedures in place for improvements, and that would be by the assessment project, process. So, you know, if, if there's to be something to put into this, in the construction, conditions and restrictions, you know, maybe it's something along that line, that we know that the improvements that were financed from the Oakview development went in. If this intersection is short, we have a likely source of why it's short, why, why there needs to be some improvements to put in.
Yeah, I'll just mention, I'm sure you saw it, the clients own TIA, suggested a significant change to an overpass bridge on a interstate highway. If that is not contemplated in the state's design, that's a significant troubling point. So. I'm not sure if we have any consensus on it.
Are you suggesting that we get an answer to that before we move forward?
I don't think we need.
I raised it.
Can I ask Doug a question?
Can I ask Doug a question?
Certainly.
Being that they are part of the TID, this would go to Mike as well, being that this property is part of the TID, was any of this stuff factored in when they did the traffic study for Oakview?
I believe that the, that the Oakview Traffic Impact Analysis, yes, that included that the last, the last phase of the, you know, the buildup in the entire area. But again, this development is different than what was contemplated for that last phase of Opus. This clearly is different traffic and higher volumes.
As I stated before though, everything that's coming in Oakview is based on a projection of what they think may be built there, and that can change too.
All right.
Chair, if I may, and I'd be happy to pass on to Mr. Simmons. I have the June 13, 2013 Oakview Business Park Traffic Impact Analysis by Traffic Analysis and Design, a Cedarburg company. And I think if I'm not mistaken, the City of Oak Creek actually retained TADI to do a lot of the traffic studies on its behalf, or maybe it was DOT in this area. I would say that TADI is one of the most well-respected traffic engineers around. Mr. Frankie hired them to do his traffic impact analysis in 2013. These documents are big. These engineers, they get their money's worth. This is our October 11, 2016 Traffic Impact Analysis, also by TADI. We figured they had a lot of institutional knowledge doing this one three years ago, and as Mr. Simmons explained, they built upon that. So this is the document that outlined what Oakview Business Park did and beyond, and identified a number of projections. And for example, on page 23 of, and I think this is the executive summary, it referenced that at Opus Drive and Oakwood Road, with the projected traffic in 2013, a four-way stop sign ought to be sufficient. Now, with the benefit of what our proposal is, and we can quantify for FedEx Freight the number of trucks that'll flow through Opus Drive and Oakwood, our study, and as required by the city staff, requires signals to be installed at Opus and Oakwood. So that's a perfect example of this is a projection. Nobody knows even what all the traffic at Oakview will be, but now that we can quantify what our specific use is, because we're no longer a 48-acre vacant site, but we have our 300 trucks a day, the engineers know that best practices, best design of Opus and Oakwood, signals are required. I can speak to signals in the intersection of Oakwood and Howell as well. I would suggest, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but I would suggest to you that what Oakview Business Park did is put the infrastructure, put the design, put the layout of that intersection into place that will accommodate with adjustments to signal timing or other software upgrades. As traffic may build on Oakwood, to make those turns, those lights can be adjusted. The physical improvements may not be necessary. We may need that at Opus and Oakwood to accommodate the new traffic signals, but at Howell and Oakwood, there are the physical improvements and they can make, be made with adjustments. So much so that the TIA, and these are the exhibits 4.1 through 4.5, and I'd be happy to pass this on to Mr. Simmons. I know Mr. Johnston was very familiar with this. He sat through all the plan commissions. As mentioned, this is an October 11, 2016 document, so it's been on record with City Hall for six months now, more than that. But Mr. Johnston, in a meeting that I was present at, we were talking about traffic signals, and he actually took about 10 minutes to, and he looked at all this stuff, 10 minutes, and ultimately Doug and Andrew and Kerry Papelbon were addressing other issues. Brian then chimed in and indicated what I'm about to say, that these exhibits 4.1 through 4.5 indicate Oakwood Road and Howell Ave, State Highway 38, operates at the expected level of service of C, B, or A. C is what's customary and required. C and above through all of the build-out scenarios, and that includes Oakview Business Park full build-out as projected by Mr. Frankie's TIA and our known traffic as projected, and we can quantify in ours. And then moving to the Ryan Road interchange and that on-ramp, our TIA indicates that in year 2027, with our full build-out and full build-out of Oakview and whoever knows, who knows what else is going on north and south, that that's when that intersection needs to be studied. And to Alderman Gale's point, the left turn lane might need to be lengthened at that point. And so that's a 2027 future study, but that's the possible scenario. And then I've since learned that there may be a full interchange reconstruction, rebuild that then can factor. DOT receives all this stuff too, so DOT can build on its design through all of that. So again, I'm not the traffic engineer. I'd be happy to pass all this to Mr. Simmons, and he can eyeball it, but it's been on file with his department for years with the Oakview Business Park, for months with ours. And I know Mr. Johnson has specifically looked at this issue, and that's why, as Doug mentioned, staff is reasonably focused on the Opus Drive and Oakview requirement and not others that do not have evidence in the record of something that's required. Want any of this paper?
All right, so there is, is there consensus to add language? Leave it as it is? Speaker piece here real quick so we can get a feel for this and move on.
It was the feeling at planning, and we did discuss that, some traffic at the very end, if there should be changes and along with some other things. We should leave it as staff laid out at this particular moment in time. That was the consensus at planning the other night.
So then, Dan, right now, you're comfortable leaving it as it is?
Yes, because the intersection that Chris brings up, it's, it's hard to predict what's going to be at Oakwood. And again, it's, as Mike stated, it's going to be in conjunction with the state. So it's hard to put a stipulation on them to be responsible for everything.
I'm just trying to get a feel for whether or not we.
Yeah, okay.
Mark, you have a?
I think I'm ready to.
You're good, you're good to go on that? Steve?
I'm good to go.
Uh, don't hit Mike?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion to go to the cause here? Seeing none, is there a motion on the floor?
Brerhalen makes a motion to approve the conditions and restrictions for a conditional use permit for the property at 500 West Opus Drive, allowing for the development of a freight terminal with two underground fuel storage tanks, excess of 5,000 gallons, and outdoor storage of Dolly equipment as accessory uses.
Attorney?
I would just incorporate and adopt ordinance number 2844, please.
Um, I can.
For a second.
One more second.
Go call.
Alderman Gale.
No.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Aye.
Vic Havigich?
Aye.
Brerhalen?
Aye.
Tolman?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
No.
Motion carries. Mary, Mary Kay, please. We have? Yeah, well, you know, that's Carl.
I know what, I was in there today and I told them. Well, here's, here's the thing. There's a lot of ant contamination there, and I talked to Melissa about it this afternoon. Yes, a lot of asbestos, two underground fuel storage tanks there.
Okay, we're going to move on if the carry-on conversation's out in the hallway, please to be thankful. Item number 10, consider a resolution authorizing staff to apply to the State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for an open space acquisition project in the adopted Parks and Open Space Plan and Abinshane Community Park Master Plan for an Abinshane Community Park expansion. Doug?
Thank you briefly. In 2008, the council adopted the Abinshane Community Park Master Plan. On development has been proceeding with that park in accordance with that plan. Part of that plan identified a property in the south and east along Forest Hill Avenue as a potential expansion area for that park. One of the vehicles that the city has used in the past to implement its Park and Open Space Plan with respect to acquisitions has been the stewardship program and the acquisition and development of local parks program through the State Department of Natural Resources. That is a grant program that is typically funded annually, which requires an application process, requires matching funding. Prior to staff applying for grant funding under this and any other program, it is customary that the council will begin an opportunity to assess whether that is consistent with the goals of the city and the adopted Parks and Open Space Plan, in this case, the Abinshane Park Master Plan. And therefore, they would need to authorize staff to apply for funding under this program. Now, that does not mean that this obligates the common council to accept that grant. That is a separate action that the council would take in order to expend any funds for that, separate process for that. It merely allows staff to make the application on behalf of the city. One thing that I do want to note, because it did come up in discussion this afternoon, is that there's been some intelligence to the fact that there may be some environmental activities or hindrances that are taking place on that property. As part of the acquisition process, there would be a Phase 1 environmental assessment performed on the study. That, that's done almost automatically with any city acquisition. And if there were recognized environmental concerns or REC's that are identified as part of that Phase 1, certainly we would have the option, a couple of options at that point, whether or not to proceed with the grand, the acquisition. Certainly that would be reflected in the sales price of the property, and the council would have options at that point in time. So at this point, you're just authorizing us to apply for the grant, recognize that, I mean, the things that are found out during that investigation process may shed some light on the council's desire to proceed with that acquisition, but this is the first step to finding that out.
Great, thank you, Doug. Alderman Tolman?
Case for that environmental, if we, if we need it.
Typically, it is, is part of the matching grant, so the city would be responsible for at least half of that. We would be funding the money for that.
Do we have any idea what that 12 acres is worth? Any ballpark number?
We could get the assessed value for you. Sure, I don't at the moment, no.
I understand this is the first phase of this, but you know, you've got a 2008 date on here. Now, when, when you talk about a master plan or moving forward with park acquisition, you've, you've got a label of, you've got down Community Park, it's under Community Park Funds, Impact Fees. Community Park, okay. Is that, is that one big pot of money? What I'm trying to get to is, since then, we've, we've developed this park at the lakefront.
Correct.
Is that the same pot of money that could be used at the lakefront?
It is the same pot of money, yes.
Okay, then I vehemently oppose this. Not just because it's not, not just because the lakefront's in my district, but this city has taken a big, big step at that lakefront. And if we want to pump some dollars into this community, given the, given the size that already exists at Abinshane, which is huge, it's, it's spread out to, to me, it's overbuilt already. I see, I see the funds, if this is one big pot of money, being used at the lakefront enough. Go ahead.
And I certainly can appreciate that concern, and certainly in this, this time of limited resources, we want to make wise investments of our park impact fee dollars. I will suggest though, that a lot of that's been done on the lakefront, has our, has been funded primarily through some bonding, some more that will be funded through the Tiff District, and some has been funded and will continue to be funded through impact fees. But the, the impact fees that have been collected have not been from the lakefront. They've been citywide, and correctly so. I mean, they should be directed towards projects throughout the community and not too narrowly focused. I'm not saying that the lakefront's an area that shouldn't be focused on because it's a great project, something that's long overdue, but I think that the purpose of the community, of the impact fees is that they should be spent relative to the areas in which they're collected, and certainly this would be an acceptable use of those funds.
Just to be real clear, this is not the total fund balance in the, in the park impact fee fund, to be clear. I take your points, Mike. I, I think there is a, has to be a focus there, but I'd also redraw your attention back to the discussions we had with the strategic plan, in that we wouldn't put all of our eggs in one park basket, so to speak, that we would also be looking at broadening and expanding amenities at other parks in concert with, with the lakefront. And, and that will appear in the draft strategic plan document in the future. But certainly, we have the focus on the lakefront, not to the, to the detriment or lack of attention to other amenities we want to, want to bolster. Most importantly, that is not, that is not the total fund balance in the park impact fee.
And, okay, good, good comments, but part of my original statement was that I think Abinshane is overbuilt already. That's just my opinion. And we've, we've already, and you know, to address Doug's comments, we've already put a lot of money into Abinshane Park, which was a. money into AbenShine Park, which was appropriate at the time. I think the whole landscape of the city has changed with this park at the lakefront. This isn't a district issue, don't get me wrong. That's not why I'm speaking up here. I think if you put 1,000 people in this room, the overwhelming majority would say that the public is going to get a better use of those funds at the lakefront, because they've been crying for development down there for years, and now we're finally taking the steps to do it. I think we should follow through with it. That's all I've got.
Alderman Gale's? Alderman Kirkowski?
I, I agree with Alderman Tillman's comments. I want to add that because of everything going down at the lakefront and what we're trying to do down there, and then we're looking at possibly procuring more land for AbenShine on a master plan that is dated back to 2008, I personally would like to see the plan for AbenShine updated and try and take into consideration what we're trying to do at the lakefront, because while I, you know, part of the AbenShine is in my district and part of it is in Alderman Forhailen's district, there are things that want to be put in AbenShine that I, while I have a love of baseball, I would oppose another baseball field because of, I won't go into detail, so I'd like to see the master plan for AbenShine updated, taken into consideration with potential or with the plans for the lakefront. If nothing more, if we acquire the property, then we acquire the property, but we don't do anything until we update the plan, because, you know, the trails that were put in there may change, the, there's only one way in and out, except for a skate park, so there are, I think there's issues there that need to be addressed first.
Sure, and if I may, certainly, the discretion is yours as to whether or not you authorize us to apply for this grant, but I just want to draw your attention to the fact that the acquisition or potential acquisition of this property accomplishes a few other things. I mean, there is significant environmental, environmental, I mean floodplain, wetlands on this property. This property is adjacent to the Oak Creek. When you think about, and without going into a long extended history lesson, you know, why do you preserve parkland? Typically, you preserve that for a number of reasons. Principle among that is to preserve your environmental corridors, your lands along the Oak Creek. I think that has been consistently done throughout the Milwaukee County, certainly throughout the Oak Creek. So, this isn't necessarily an acquisition, like, say, we're going to buy this, we're going to put baseball fields there, we're going to put soccer fields there. I mean, that certainly would lie within the discretion of, the council is directed by the Parks and the Parks Commission. It's not a case of either AbenShine or the lakefront. A well-rounded community pays attention to its park facilities at all different levels, be it the neighborhood parks, community parks, or the regional parks such as Lake Vista and Bender. So, I don't want us to put these parks in competition with each other. I think it makes sense to investigate whether or not, it makes sense from a resource standpoint to acquire this property, but I don't want to preclude that, just given the perception that anything we do at AbenShine is going to be to the detriment of Lake Vista.
Can I clarify something, just because I may have missed it in the discussion? This is to apply for a grant from the State of Wisconsin to study the purchase of this property?
This would be to apply for a grant that would cover half of the purchase cost.
Half of the, but, okay.
Property, which we have no idea what the value is.
Oh, we can get you the value in this thing.
I would appreciate that before I vote.
So, um, okay. Yeah, and I know Alderman Forhailen had some comments that he wanted to shed on this particular piece of property.
Doug, I have a question. What are the time restraints for applying for the grant?
It would be, it would be an application this spring yet.
But, I mean, are we under a time constraint? Do we have to be in by April 1st or May 1st?
Yes, it'd be, it's usually beginning of May.
Beginning of May. So, we have about 45 days to move forward on it.
Sure.
All right, but I guess for my two cents worth, and I talked to Melissa, not at length, about this today, and I think she's, after that, spoke to you a little bit about some of my concerns. The one thing is, with the existing greenhouses that are there and the residence and the boiler sheds and whatever, there's potential for asbestos contamination and probably some fuel contamination, because of the nature of running those boilers and stuff, and I don't think that stuff was ever remediated out of there. So, I asked Melissa today if we did accept the grant, if we could approach the owners of that property and perhaps just purchase the back half of that. That would put the south property line of AbenShine would basically go straight across the middle of this property, so you'd avoid, avoid any of the remediation costs and stuff, because there was no buildings in the back half of that. And then, you'd come across the creek, and there's about three acres of that property that are on the east side of the Oak Creek beside. So, with that being done, perhaps, if it would be possible, we could probably take the price of that or the cost of that property way down. And the reason I was, had concerns, because if we move ahead on the entire property and we end up with, say, $250,000 in remediation costs, you know, I was as much of a fan of having parks for our kids and stuff to enjoy and citizens to enjoy as well, but you have to look for, I guess, bang for the buck here. How much do you spend for four acres of land or five acres of land or six acres of land? You spend, you know, $400,000 and put another 250 grand in it for the environmental? I don't think that's a prudent way to spend a city's money.
There's a, there's a side to that. We acquired for $300,000 or $400,000 a piece of lakefront property in northern parts of the Whis Park property, ended up spending a couple million dollars to shore up the bluff, so.
That's my point.
You have to be very careful what you take property orders off.
What I mean, you know, at what point do you, you cut and run and say, it's not worth it? I'm, you know, I'd like to see another baseball field or maybe an extension of Frisbee Golf or something else down there, but, you know, is it worth spending that kind of money? You know?
Yeah.
And if we, and if we could enter to, enter into an agreement with the owners there to maybe purchase the back half, I'd be fine at looking at that, but if that's possible, if you get the grant, but I don't know if that's possible. Maybe Melissa has to explore that a little bit more, but, you know, it's something where myself, I wouldn't be looking to buy that whole property. It's not something I could...
Yeah, very quickly, I'm a member of Park and Recs, and these people approach a city. It's my understanding, the owner passed away, the city's been there, it's been flooded, we know there were greenhouses there. It would actually serve as a southern entrance. As Doug said, I don't want to get repetitive, there's a lot of wetlands there. It probably wouldn't be an active site, but it would be an addition to the park. We felt it's worth exploring. Keep in mind, guys, it's just a grant, we're not obligated to take it or use it if we're ordered.
You guys kicked it around at Parks and Rec already?
We talked about it, it didn't get this extensive, but we knew the property was coming. So, you know, we looked at it, as far as the master plan goes, yes, that master plan is being reworked, because that park has changed a couple of times and been recreated. Originally, there was a ball field, but some wetlands occurred back there, so now we have walking trails, and it's kind of developing as it goes. The parks have different types of parks, you know, pocket parks and neighborhood parks, community parks, and AbenShine serves as a community park, as well will Lake Vista. So, we have to continue to build on it. It's actually a six-phase plan, and we're only halfway through it, Doug? Three or four into it, three phases into it, four into it. So, it is evolving. I think we're just applying for it, we're just giving them the permission to. We can get the appraisal, we can decide how much we want, we can negotiate with the owners later on, but I think it's prudent that, given a short porch here, we at least give them the right to apply for it.
Now, we can always pull out of it later.
Right, right, we're not obligated.
Steve, anything?
Apply for it, we get it, then we go to Plan B, you know, with the costs and stuff like that, or we don't get it and nothing ventured, nothing gained.
Assess value is $557,000.
$557,000, so, so we would get the grant.
That's the assessed, that's the assessed value, I don't know what the appraised value would be, probably less.
I'm even more opposed to it. 12 acres? You've got to be kidding me. Does anybody have any idea it was worth that kind of money?
Well, it's in, it's in Mike's...
Okay, all right, you get the grant, I'll grant you guys that, so to speak. Okay, you get the grant, Doug's already said you're obligated before to do an environmental, what's that going to cost? Do we have any idea what that's?
Phase, Phase 1 is a couple thousand dollars.
That's it, $2,000?
Keep in mind, I don't know if you remember, but at one point in time, we were donated, offered to take some land up on Drexel and about 23rd, and the city was looking into it. We did a Phase 1, it came up bad, we dropped it right there, we were done.
And you've walked away from grants before, grants that were approved?
Yes.
We walked away from one on the lakefront.
Yeah, because of the boiling thing, right?
Yes, I know that. In this case, you're talking over a quarter of a million dollars, city sure. 12 acres, that's questionable. I don't see it. Go ahead.
So, this is going to give you authorization, Doug, just to apply for it, and we're going to continue to kick the tires and look at iterations and environmental issues here in the meantime?
If that's, that's the direction of the council, yes.
Kuzikowski, anything?
No.
Else?
I think in addition to not only the environmental, you have to, I want to cost of what building demo would cost, just on the assumption that there's no environmental there, because that's added cost as well.
That's all going to be taken though, so...
You did budget in 2017 to update the AbenShine master plan.
Yeah, I remember that part of the... Is that funded out of CIP, Doug, or recall that coming through the pike somewhere?
Park impact fees. I mean, it went through CIP, but the funding source is park impact fees.
That's funding sources, okay. All right, Mike, you are where you are, if we understand.
I'm fine.
Okay, we have a motion on 10?
Hey, Kirkowski, make a motion to adopt resolution number 11799-030717, authorizing the staff to apply to the State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for open space acquisition project in the adopted Parks and Open Space Plan and AbenShine Community Park Master Plan.
Vicavich will second.
Great, roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Vicavich?
Aye.
Forhailen?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Great. Item number 11, out of engineering. Mike, thanks for hanging around. Consider a motion to award the 2017 road improvement unit price contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Payne and Dolan, at the estimated cost of $921,787.80, and to add two more road segments to the contract work for an additional estimated $65,000 based on contract unit prices for a total estimated cost of $986,787.80, project 17019. Mike, thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Yes, the bids came in lower than expected, and so, that's why there is the added request to add the two alternative sections, which had been part of the CIP recommendation, and that would be about another $65,000. So, just to, just to let you know what we're dealing with here, even if, if the two road segments are added, we've got just over 1.3 million minus the payout of 987,000 for this work to be accomplished, still has $315,000 available. Now, we also, also coming out of that CIP committee meeting and recommendation was that if there were surplus funds on top of, of what we were looking at, that Street Department could tackle some of these outstanding larger concrete road patches. I know Alderman Gale, you had, you have some on a list, they could undertake those. Alderman Kirkowski, I know you, we talked very recently about an intersection in your district that could use some extensive repairs, so some of these funds could go towards that as well. So, so, you know, hypothetically, if we say they're going to, they're going to spend $100,000 taking care of some of these larger concrete road patches, we're still looking at $215,000.
We have no shortage of prospects, right?
Absolutely, so, so, yeah, so, we, you know, it may be prudent to have the CIP committee convene and talk about that, because we, you know, there are alternates, the other segments that we could add, or some alternate procedures that we could try, we talked about...
You'd have to rebid that then, Mike, or go off for new bid on additions?
For that amount, I think that we probably would need to go off for bids, rather than just adding it onto the contract.
But that's your own, in the same problem, if you rebid in the middle of the season, that you don't get a place.
Do that, or we could add it to a total for the next cycle.
Well, good, it's, it's good to hear, actually, that prices were...
Yeah, and, and, you know, so we tried to trace on why we were so over on our estimates.
Because you put preliminary estimates out, right?
We did, yes, and, you know, we, we were at one point, one point two million on the estimates, and we wanted to, and we knew we had 1.3, we did not want to put anything more than that, because, you know, there's, there may be change orders. You know, price contracts will pay out what is actually constructed, and very often, that goes over the awarded amount rather than under. So, we looked into it, and we were very heavy on our asphalt estimate per ton, and that has fluctuated wildly over the years. Got it down, 2014, we're looking at $68 a ton, 2015, we were at 57, this year, we came in at 54, you know, which was a substantial amount of that bid, that was $483,000. So, that made up 176,000 of that overage on our estimate. So, we were trying to be conservative, because we were getting a little frustrated, being a little bitter always on these projects, so we probably need to ratchet that back a bit.
Okay. Appreciate the work. Any questions, comments from Mike?
I think it's a good idea to reconvene CIP, because in a lot of cases, you know, I've gone through this quite a few years now, and if you do a project in conjunction with another one in the neighborhood, and the end game is you save money on the total project, so there may be something we need to look at.
Yeah, I know, one of the alternatives actually is right next to stuff that's already going out.
Same neighborhood, yeah.
Mike, I got a question. Would you recommend using all of what's in the, in the extra, or you still recommend holding some back?
Oh, because our city engineer just said that there could be over that cost.
Right.
Oh, yeah, we're all for a buffer. That's what this...
What, what do you think, what do you think?
Well, that's what this two-segment alternate plan was to begin with, to see what the bids were, and then we move forward from there.
What's, what's traditional of holdback? 150, 200?
Generally, we've been spending it all, actually. Pretty, pretty close.
Kind of closer than that.
Yeah, I would say, you know, maybe recommend, here's your awarded amount, maybe recommend 8% over that as change orders and actual paid-out quantities.
Because we, especially in some of the concrete roads, we ran into some significant change order. So, great, any motion on 11 then?
I'm going to make a motion to award the, how are we going to do this? Are we going to, okay, we're just, we're dealing with this motion right, okay. I'm going to make a motion to award the 2017 road improvement unit price contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Payne and Dolan Incorporated, at the estimated cost of $921,787.80, and to add two more road segments to the contract work for an additional estimated $65,000 based on contract unit prices for a total estimated cost of $986,787.80, project number 17019.
Kuzikowski will second.
Good, roll call.
Alderman Vicavich?
Aye.
Forhailen?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Kuzikowski?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
License Committee, Alderman Kirkowski.
Best for last. License Committee did not meet prior to the council meeting. Tentative recommendations are as follows. Item 12, Kirkowski makes a motion to grant an operator's license to the five individuals listed on the agenda. Favorable background reports were received.
Kuzikowski will second.
Roll call. Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
Vicavich?
Aye.
13?
Kurkowski make a motion to grant a Reserve Class B combination to Sean M. Volmer Agent, Three Cellars LLC, DBA, Three Cellars, 7228 South 27th Street, former Raptors location with issuance subject to final, I'm sorry, to final fire and inspection department approvals and release of an occupancy permit.
Kurkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
Vicavich?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
14?
Kurkowski make a motion to grant a Class B beer, Class C wine license to Robin Koshvarov, Agent Valentine Cafe LLC, DBA Valentine Cafe, 7981 South 6th Street, with issuance subject to final Sanitarium and Inspection Department approvals and release of an occupancy permit.
Kurkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
Vicavich?
Aye.
Verhaelen? Tillman?
Adjournment?
Kurkowski make a motion to adjourn.
Avich will second.
Ken, be second, roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski?
Aye.
Vicavich?
Aye.
Verhaelen? Tillman?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye. Thank you all. Steve? Appreciate it.